I'd like to reconvene a regular meeting of the City Council Public Financing Authority and call to order the special meeting on Housing Authority. City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Moser?
Here.
Councilmember Bolton, she has submitted an absence request for a portion of tonight's meeting pursuant to Resolution 2001-54. Unless I receive objections, we'll note that as approved, but she will return. Mayor Pro Tem Burns?
Here.
Here.
Mayor Vandermark?
Here.
Councilmember Strickland?
Here.
Councilmember McKeon?
Here.
Councilmember Kelmick?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now like to, actually, the Director of Human Resources, Marissa Surr, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand if you're able to and place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, united god, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Huntington Beach Police and Fire Chief Bob Ewing.
Would you all bow with me, please? Almighty God, we come into your presence with grateful hearts. We are thankful for our great nation and the freedoms we have. And Father, we are just a few days of celebrating and remembering those men and women who gave their lives for these freedoms. And so I thank you for those who sacrificed, and I thank you for those who continue to work for our freedom. Father, we are thankful for the men and women who represent us at this city. I thank you for our city. I thank you for those who lead us. I pray that as our City Council deliberates tonight, that you would grant them the wisdom needed to make decisions that will impact our city. I pray the same for those members of our city staff as they advise our council. I thank you for the freedom to offer opinions about city matters. May all who offer them do so with respect and courtesy. God, this city is a great city. We have so much to offer both our citizens and our visitors. And so, Father, I thank you for our public safety agencies. I thank you for Chief Para, Chief Habberly, and their command staffs. And I ask you would watch over those agencies and protect them, give them guidance, and watch over them, and we thank you for their duty and their service. Father, be with us tonight as decisions are made that will impact all. In your most holy name, Lord, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Moving on to closed session. City Attorney, do you have anything to report from closed session?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Announcement of supplemental communications. Do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, we do. For consent, calendar item six, email communication received from Michael Conray, Superintendent Ocean View School District regarding proposed adoption of a revised City Council manual. For item seven, an email received regarding positions on legislation pending before the state legislature. Item nine, email communication received regarding proposed memorandum of understanding with American Legion Post 133. Item 10, memorandum received from Ashley Wysocki, our Director of Community and Library Services, updating the title for item 10. And also for item 10, two email communications regarding the Marina Park Reconfiguration conceptual plan. For consent, item 17, memorandum was received from Chow Wu, our Director of Public Works, regarding proposed adoption of Resolution 2024-15 concerning the status and update of the pavement management plan for the Measure Two, Measure M2 program and adoption of a seven-year capital improvement program for fiscal years 2024 through '25 and 2030 through '31. For, I'll announce public hearing items at that time. For Councilmember items number 28, email communications regarding the item "Water is Wet, Sky is Blue." And Councilmember item 21, 30 email communications received regarding the affirmation of the Huntington Beach City Council's commitment to the United States Constitution and special recognition that Huntington Beach is a First and Second Amendment-friendly city. That's it.
Thank you. Do we have anybody signed up to speak?
At this time, we have 35 speaker sheets that we've received.
Okay, we will do two minutes. At this time, the City Council will receive comments from members of the public regarding any topic, including items on the open session agenda. Individuals wishing to provide a comment may do so in person by filling out a Request to Speak form delivered to the city clerk. All speakers are encouraged but not required to identify themselves by name. Each speaker may have up to three minutes unless the volume of speakers warrants reducing the time allowance. Please note that the Brown Act does not allow discussion or action on topics that are not on the agenda. Members of the public who would like to speak directly with a council member on an item not on the agenda may consider scheduling an appointment by contacting City Council, the City Council Administrative Assistant at 714-536-5553, or emailing the entire city council@city.council@surfcity-hb.org.
All right, I'll call the first group down. Please approach both podiums. Aaron Pye, Chad Williams, Don Kennedy, Butch Twining, Rick Brown, Dom McGee, Patty Papas, Jeanne Paris, Ann Palmer, Valentina.
Thank you. First Speaker, go ahead.
Last council meeting, I brought to the public's attention that Dan Kelmick had some hurt feelings about my April 16th comments, so he had his lawyer serve me with a cease and desist threatening to sue me for millions if I don't obey their demands. Last meeting, Kelmick then tried to downplay what his lawyer sent, saying it was a letter, only a letter, requesting this person apologize. Please, roll the tape.
To be clear, my private attorney for my campaign sent a letter, a letter only, requesting that this person apologize.
Spoken like a true politician, Dan. Let's read some of the highlights of said letter. Cease and desist, false and defamatory statements regarding Councilmember Dan Kelmick. Your accusations are defamatory. There are serious consequences for those who engage in defamation. Recent defamation cases brought by public figures have resulted in multimillion-dollar jury verdict awards. Additionally, should these false and defamatory statements result in your election, you would be barred from holding office. To remedy this, we demand that you immediately publish in the Daily Pilot a retraction prior to June 6. Our client intends to seek full recovery from you. Those damages increase every minute your statements remain without being retracted. Contact me immediately to confirm your compliance with these demands. Sure has a smell to it, like the threat of weaponizing lawfare against your political opponent. Thank you, guys. God bless you all.
Thank you. Next Speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Vandermark, Mayor Pro Tem Pat Burns, Natalie, Dan Kelmick, Dan Casey, and everyone in the room. My name is Aaron Pye. I'm the owner of Huntington Surf and Sport. I was born in Honolulu, Honolulu, Hawaii. I caught my first wave at the Huntington Pier at the age of 12. I worked for the city of Huntington Beach at 18-years-old picking up trash. I'm a proud resident of Huntington Beach for 52 years. Today, I'm happily married with four kids and 10 grandkids and one cool dog. Pye family, we're a surfing family. Everyone surfes in the Pye family, all 20 of us. I'm here to speak in support of Kelly Miller and the resolution of intent to modify the tourism bid. I have known Kelly Miller since 2013. Kelly Miller is a class act. Visit Huntington Beach is a class act. We are delighted to learn about the proposed modification and believe in our community and surrounding businesses will benefit from it. With more visitors coming to Huntington Beach, our community and surrounding businesses will have more foot traffic, better business, and a healthier local economy. We strongly believe this modification will benefit not only the tourism bid, but also businesses like Sugar Shack, Jan's Health Bar, Rock and Fig, and businesses like ours, HSS. We hope that the City Council will support the resolution and intent, and we heard the good news that there is support. And we much love and aloha, happy summer, and we're stoked on every one of you and everyone in the room, all the people right over here, we're stoked on too. So, good job.
Thank you.
Keep up the great work.
Next Speaker.
Don Kennedy, City Council candidate. Contrast, the state of being strikingly different, like love is to hate, like peace is to violence, like truth is to lies. The common denominator is stark differences. This coming election, there is stark contrast between the candidates. To represent the people of HB requires leadership by representation and love of city, not love of Sacramento. I love our city. They, Kelmick, Moser, Bolton, they acquiesce to Sacramento. These three will tell you that they're fiscally sound and responsible. What they won't tell you is they did vote to approve a $370 million bond without any voter approval. Kelmick, Moser, and Bolton are running for reelection. They've already cost our city $25 million in property taxes, but they won't tell you that. What they will tell you is that if you love the American flag and you want to limit cause flags from flying on our government properties, that you're homophobic, transphobia, or that you hate gays, which is simply not true. They will do anything to stoke fear, hatred, and division. This is how the three think and lead. I love our city, and I offer leadership by representation, representation that will be governed by the will of our residents. That's how I will lead. My decisions will be guided by what's best for Huntington Beach, not what will please Sacramento, not which way the wind is blowing for these social justice warriors wrapped in the title of a councilperson. That's how they think and act, so I will lead with truth, not lies to create division and fear. Truth and transparency will guide me. The example of their lies is privatization. We're not privatizing the library. Nothing is for sale. They know that, but the lie generates fear and division. They're trying to raise campaign funds off that lie. Don't buy the lies. For those who have not yet decided, ask yourself, who will represent my best interest? Truth and transparency is what I offer. Fear-mongering divisiveness and deception is what they offer. To me, the answer is very clear. I'm asking for your vote in November. Don Kennedy for Huntington Beach City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Next Speaker. Next Speaker, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Butch Twining. I'm a 58-year resident of Huntington Beach. I'm an HB Planning Commissioner and candidate for City Council this year. I want to add a little clarity, and also in the spirit of levity, which we don't get a lot here, I want to talk about Agenda Item 24, 433. Is the sky blue? Due to a phenomenon called the Rayleigh scattering, the sky only appears to be blue because as the sunlight entering the Earth's atmosphere, it collides with molecules and other small particles. Blue light is scattered in all directions, more than any other color, because it travels as shorter, smaller waves. Hence, it would appear to some that the sky is blue or magenta. However, the sky isn't actually blue in a physical sense. In reality, the sky has no intrinsic color, neither blue or any other color for that matter. Is water wet? While water is considered wet, because wet is a term used to describe the presence of liquid on a surface, what we're saying is water is a liquid, and when it comes into contact with something, it makes that something wet. It's a scientific, from a scientific perspective, water is not wet, and in and of itself, instead, it causes wetness when it comes into contact with a solid surface. Wetness is a perception that arises from an interaction between liquid, water, and solids. So while water is what makes things wet, it is not wet by itself. Therefore, I recommend a strong no on Agenda Item 24, 433. And remember, this November, vote for Don Kennedy, Chad Williams, and me for City Council. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job.
Next Speaker.
Don McGee. I'd like to commend Pat Burns on his agenda item, asserting that Huntington Beach is a bastion of First and Second Amendment rights. In response to this, dodgy Dan Kelmick over here composed a pure ill-agenda item, which may have been a weird attempt at humor. Anyway, Dan, in response to this agenda item stated in a recent LA Times article, these people are not serious people. They're not serious about governing. They're not serious about what we're actually there to do at a local level. Well, we shouldn't really give Dan any credence because he lied in the recent cease and desist letter that he sent to Chad Williams in his most recent desperate attempt and futile attempt at lawfare. But in the spirit of this particular agenda item, I believe that Mayor, the Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem should liaise with the Chief of Police, Chief Para, and we should have a system whereby lawful residents of Huntington Beach who are not felons are issued CCWs. And we can do this. The Penal Code 26150, 26155, and 26170 specifically states that a CCW license may be issued by a sheriff of a county or the police chief or other head of a municipal police department, or any county or city may issue a CCW permit. So I would propose that Mayor Pro Tem Burns and Mayor Gracie liaise with the Chief of Police and put together a system whereby we can be armed citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next Speaker.
Honorable Mayor, Council, and Staff, the residents of Huntington Beach voted for our current majority, and we voted for a team that held strong community values. We specifically voted for Gracie Vandermark, knowing that she was advancing initiatives to promote safety. When she and the other new council members were elected, they began to enact their contract with HB and authorized our police to enforce the law. Resolution 202341 is one of those initiatives, the relocation of pornographic library materials. Councilmember Kelmick spoke in Sacramento recently regarding the California Freedom to Read Act. He was not there as a public speaker, but as a witness for the Assembly Committee on Education, supporting 1825. And I just wondered why he was speaking to the Educational Committee. The Act states that it is in public interest for publishers and librarians to make available the widest views and expressions, including those that are unorthodox, unpopular, or considered dangerous by the majority. He also spoke about our city and our council and the ordinance for the parent board. He said, he spoke about our city. He said shortly after being elected, immediately, they, the new council, turned to restricting the rights of others that don't conform with their narrow, hateful views. He also referred to our community parent review board as the 21 random political appointees. Very disrespectful to our HB residents. Please have the librarians do their job.
Thank you. Next Speaker.
Hi, Ann Palmer, longtime resident. Despite the animus you normally hear here every week, I've been encouraged that many people in the community are actually talking about some of the issues and coming to some middle ground. And it made me think of one of the most remarkable people I ever met, and that is John Wooden, Coach John Wooden. And one of the things that he said is, it's okay to disagree, just don't be disagreeable. So I want to talk about some of the things that we all agree on. Librarians and libraries have always been highly trusted and respected, and I actually think that's one reason why age-inappropriate materials found at the library were such a shock. We do care about our Huntington Beach library, and we care about children and adolescents. The issues are not black and white, and solutions take time to develop, and I think most people can agree with that. There are some challenges, however, and I'd hate to be a librarian in the last couple of decades, between library 2.0 and publisher pushback, all the way to the faltering economy, lots of challenges. But I want to focus on those that involve participatory librarianship and more community involvement. A parent guardian advisory group can be valuable to Huntington Beach. It would not replace or demonize librarians or volunteers. Every HBCC member should embrace having parents and guardians participate. I see it as a teachable moment for parents, library staff, and city administrators, and also an opportunity for ongoing process improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next Speaker.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Vandermark, Mayor Pro Tem Pat Burns, and Councilmembers. My name is Jeanne Paris, longtime resident of Huntington Beach. I am here tonight in strong support of Item 21, confirming our city's commitment to our First and Second Amendment under our Constitution. Though this may seem a given, you would think, our freedoms, including freedom of speech and right to keep and bear arms, are actively under attack. Unlike Item Number 20, water is wet and the sky is blue, which seems a bit frivolous in times that we are living in, this council majority takes on the big issues. They constantly fight for individual rights versus state mandates. Freedom of the citizens to pursue happiness versus state control should be the job of all of our representatives. Fighting ridiculous housing numbers, protecting our city charter, voting for age-appropriate books and age-appropriate sections, not a band, looking for solutions to our budget issues, it's not privatization, and on and on and on. Now we have SB 1174 that will try to stop cities from requiring voter ID. The state never stops, but fortunately, neither does our City Council majority plus one. Thank you.
Thank you. Next Speaker.
Valentina Bankhead, resident of Huntington Beach. I am not going to quote the disrespectful Agenda 20 item that the Democrat Dan Kelmack, our city Huntington Beach City Council member, has to offer all his constituents, all of his voters, all of his donors, and all of his supporters. He offers this, nothing, zero. He is a joke, just like your money he took for his candidacy. He is condescending to the audience here tonight and all who are watching on TV, as he will even attempt to entertain his clown friends and lame excuse for his bad temperament and lack of self-control regarding an agenda item. Just as you stated, Kelmick, your agis comments about any older, anyone older than 25 or elderly candidates, just as you spoke about the minority communities of Huntington Beach and how they are not able to get an ID, so you are racist against Mexicans? Are you assuming we are uneducated? Just as you demean Mayor Gracie Vandermark in regards to oppression and women's voting rights, as she is Latina and female, woman, mother, and a strong council member we are all very, very proud of, shame on you. As our Pro Tem Pat Burns places an Agenda Item 21, which is very important to all of the residents, their families, all of the visitors, tourists from around the world that come to our sweet, small town of Huntington Beach, we are grateful and so very thankful for you bringing onto the dais our First and Second Amendment rights and the encouragement to all of the council to agree and places on the record for our city we all love so dearly. And vote for Chad Williams, Don Kennedy, Butch Twining for City Council 2024. And vote for Trump 2024. Trump 2024, a force we reckon with. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, last call. Last call for Rick Brown. The next group, Russ Neal, Barbara Richardson, Amory Hansen, David Reinerson, Diane Bentley, Marissa Jackson, Kathy Ryder, Tim Geddes, Kane and Durham, and Bea Chanel. Come on down.
First Speaker, go ahead.
Barbara Richardson, 51-year resident. I am a member of the Save the Huntington Beach Library Group, and we are currently working on a petition that would allow residents to vote on whether our library should be run by a private outside company. I encourage all registered Huntington Beach voters to sign this petition when it becomes available. Residents should be allowed to have a voice in what happens to their library. It is a nonpartisan issue. You can vote yes or no. For more information when and where this petition can be signed, keep checking on social media, including protectHB.org. And since we really don't know what the future holds for our library, the Friends of the Children's Library are having a special pre-50th birthday carnival celebration for the Central Library on Saturday, June 22nd, from 10:00 to 2:00 in front of the Central Library. It is also the first day that children, teens, and adults can register for the library's summer reading program. There'll be free carnival games for the children, special free children's programs, hamburgers, shaved diets, face painting, and balloons. There will also be a fantastic silent auction where one can bid on items such as a beach parking pass and tickets to an Angels baseball game. For more information, pick up flyers at any Huntington Beach library branch, or go to FOTCL.org and click on Events and Contest. Once again, this special free celebration takes place on Saturday, June 22nd, from 10:00 to 2:00 at the Central Library, and it is sponsored by Friends of the Children's Library. Thank you.
Thank you. Next Speaker, go ahead.
As a wife and daughter who supports military veterans and military survivors for their ultimate sacrifice for our country, I feel it is my duty to defend and stand up for our God-inspired Constitution. Much of our Constitution is based on natural law, and many who study history consider divine law. In this divine law, our forefathers established our Constitution, and it seems the First Amendment is an issue in this City Hall. It's an important reminder for us. So among these is the natural divine law, as our unalienable rights, which include the right to free speech and the right to provide personal security. It is our responsibility to protect these rights and should not be brushed to the side or disregarded. And to further into that law, the divine law, I want to take on a full perspective here. As part of the Bill of Rights of Life, Liberty, and the Pursuit of Happiness, I believe it is a great, a great portion of our happiness is dependent on our families, our personal relationships. There are public and private duties of natural law and divine law, the Constitution, it is our duty to maintain the integrity of the family structure. And as it says in the Proclamation to the World, "All human beings, male and female, are created in the image of God. Each is a beloved spirit's son and daughter of heavenly parents, and as such, each has a divine nature and destiny. Gender is an essential characteristic of individual, pre-mortem, mortal, and eternal identity and purpose. Husband and wife have a solemn responsibility to love and care for each other and for their children. Children are a heritage of the Lord," in Psalm 127:3. Parents have a sacred duty to rear their children in love and righteousness, to provide for their physical and spiritual needs, and to teach them to love and serve one another, observe the commandments of God, and be law-abiding citizens wherever they live. Husbands and wives, mothers and fathers, will be held accountable before God for the discharge of their obligations. The family is ordained of God."
Thank you. Next Speaker.
Good evening. David Reinerson, 26-year resident. I have comments on both the budget and the library outsourcing RFP. I strenuously object to the proposed 13% increase in the budget of the City Attorney's Office. This increase on top of last year's 31% increase would increase the City Attorney's budget by over 48% since 2022. That's nearly $1.4 million, so don't try to tell me that your lawsuits cost us nothing. If you really want to know, find some cost savings, start here and stop using the City Attorney's Office to fund your personal political vendettas at citizens' expense. I must question the competence of the preparation of the library outsourcing RFP. Despite your promises that there would be no loss in quality or services, here's a list of services that were not clearly requested in the RFP. Storytime, California park passes, seed library, Zip Books, newspaper online subscription access, homework help, and genealogy. And the RFP requires only one employee with a library science degree versus the 13 that we have today. The Insurance Requirements section references Appendix A, which does not exist. However, there is an Attachment 5, which has insurance requirements. Did nobody proofread this RFP before releasing it? The insurance requirement is only $1 million, and there is no requirement for either professional insurance or property insurance. Sexual misconduct. So what happens if an outsourcer's employee causes a fire that destroys our library, its contents, and injures citizens and other employees? Do you really think that's going to be covered with $1 million of insurance that doesn't cover property damage? I'm asking for all RFP responses to be posted with adequate time for public review before any consideration of a contract. And finally, best practices for contracting with public money requires a minimum of three responsive bids and acceptance of the lowest-cost bid. To my understanding, this RFP has only been sent to one vendor and posted on a bid website, which seems totally inadequate to achieve that goal.
Thank you. Next Speaker.
The City Attorney's Office received a 31% budget increase The city attorney's office received a 31% budget increase last year after the new city council majority members were seated, and that office is poised to receive an additional 13% increase in the new budget. And in that time, the city attorney's office has lost most of the unwise lawsuits that were in progress and spent millions of our taxpayer money to settle the airshow lawsuit, the only one that the city could have won. Meanwhile, the beloved HB library system, which has operated exceptionally well on an almost flat budget for the past many years, is on the chopping block due to the unprincipled actions of the extremist city council majority. Thousands of HB residents have made their displeasure known about the attacks on the HB library, but it appears that the city council majority is deaf as they are blind. Be warned, you will regret your actions. We supporters of the HB library will not be silenced, and we will not be stopped.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening, Kathy Ryder, 39 years as a Huntington Beach voter and homeowner. And by the way, Happy Pride Month. The last agenda on tonight's agenda baffles me. I know that May was the Huntington Beach celebration of the Bill of Rights, so I would assume, since we chose an entire month to celebrate the Bill of Rights, Huntington Beach would already be a friendly city, for not only the Bill of Rights, but for all of the amendments to the Constitution. Because isn't that part of the oath of office, that you uphold and defend the whole Constitution, not just your special little separate parts? So what makes the First and Second Amendments so special? You see, we're already violating our First Amendment rights by restricting access to public materials via both a refusal to disclose a multimillion-dollar agreement with a private company and selecting a committee of political appointees to decide which books and materials to never buy with no opportunity to ever appeal or object. And is this nod to the Second Amendment, just a prelude to some kind of a city ordinance to allow open carry in Huntington Beach? Or maybe getting anybody who wants to be armed, be armed? And we can do that because we're a charter city, so rules don't apply to us? Agenda 21 is just not a good ordinance. And by the way, neither is Agenda Item Number 20. Both of them are completely unnecessary and are complete waste of taxpayer time. You can and should do better.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening, Mayor Vandermark and council members. My name is Russell Neal, and I live in Huntington Beach. The sky may be blue and water wet, but that does not mean that there is no threat. To our Constitution and rights we hold dear, there are very real threats which we rightly fear. Consider our right to free speech and belief. Are they not under attack from liar and thief? Our free speech is censored. Propaganda is fine. Social media and newspapers all toe the line. If we want your opinion, we'll give it to you. Just accept our fact-checking as if it were true. Believe what we say and say what you're told unless it's in prison you want to grow old. Or consider our right to keep and bear arms. Is that precious right, free from all harms? If the Second Amendment says armed you may be, but your state says not really, can you still say you're free? Free to do what but yield to your fate? Free to do what but bow to the state? To the state that claims absolute power? To the dictator before whom all men must cower? So we stand with Pat Burns and his resolution, for we all see the threats to our Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Mr. Amory Hansen. I'm speaking tonight in support of Item 21, Councilman Burns' item, to reaffirm the council's commitment and respect for the Constitution. The Constitution protects the right to speak at council meetings. I appreciate it. I would also like to take this opportunity to reaffirm my own commitment to the United States Constitution by making a suggestion that on September 17th, the council conduct a reading of the United States Constitution, similar to the reading of the names done on Memorial Day. And I'm encouraging residents who have not read the Constitution to check out a copy from the library. I will gladly lend my own copy as well to anyone after the meeting. I truly believe that the Constitution is a great book. I strongly urge the council to support the United States Constitution, the people's document. The Honorable Daniel Webster once said, "One country, one Constitution, one destiny." Tonight I say, "One city, one Constitution, one destiny." Once again, I urge a yes vote on Item 21. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Well, I'm glad we got to front-load the Three Stooges and their MAGA minions, get that nonsense out of the way. I disagree that we don't have any levity in public comments. Has the speaker ever listened to me? Anyway, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tim Geddes here. I would like to start off by wishing everyone a Happy Pride Month, although many residents here will be flying their pride flags at half-staff. I guess we will get to celebrate Juneteenth this year despite any restrictions on children because the date is over 18, after all. Celebrations will be held at the adult section in the library. Since Mayor Pro Tem Burns is so interested in all unrest in the state of Texas, he should pay special attention. There, it's all God-guns, and I forget, is it Abbott or Costello? Oh, yeah, Robert Costello was the loudmouth New York lawyer from the Trump trial. It must be, hey, Abbott! Yeah, Greg's got that state wired, especially along the Rio Grande. Anyway, party on, Pat. I guess the Second Amendment comes first in your Bill of Rights. Okay, enough of the jokes. One of my favorite lines from the movie Die Hard, by the way. The RFPs have gone out on the library privatization debacle and are due back in a couple of days. We'll soon see if the RFPs turn into RPGs. I'll be booking a front-row seat in the chambers at the next council meeting. Will it be "Read 'em and weep"? I guess we'll all find out.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening, 35-year resident, and Happy Pride Month. One thing is clear: this city council majority does not listen to the people. They certainly do not support transparency. They vote down the right to allow HB citizens to vote on important issues we care about like privatizing library services. Hundreds of speakers have taken time out of their lives to come here and speak about your backwards agenda, but the mayor reduces the time we can speak, and the F4 barely bother to even look up from their screens. In case you forgot, you work for us, but you seem to be drunk on power. Look up and see your bosses, please, and listen to the people. You promised transparency, yet you hid the details of the airshow settlement from the taxpaying public. Mr. Gates claimed that it was because of pending litigation with a suit against the oil company, but that was a lie. And that lie was called out by Judge Fish when he handled Mr. Gates' yet another loss in court. Thankfully, the citizens will finally get to see that settlement that we paid $5 million bucks for. We're going to get all the details of that back-room deal. Thank you, Gina.
Thank you, Gina.
The hypocrisy with this council majority is truly staggering. Mr. Burns, you have said numerous times that you are against political partisan grandstanding, yet you bring forth this ultimate partisan ridiculous agenda item, bootlicking a felon and promoting guns in the month that's supposed to be bringing gun awareness. Guns are the number-one killer of children in the United States. So much for protecting children. We know that guns do a lot more harm to children than books. Shame. Of course, HB supports the Constitution of the United States. We support the First Amendment. We support free thought and free speech, which includes the right to receive information like in--
Thank you.
Okay, last call for Kanan Durham. The next group. Wendy Rincon. Bethany Webb. Larry Sloanum. Dennis. Steve Coniff. Harry McLaughlin. Dave Reynolds. Linda Moon. Matt Kern.
First speaker, go ahead.
Wendy Rincon, 50-year resident. Happy Pride Month, everyone. The Huntington Beach Library is not broken. The librarians are not grooming children. The library is not a drain on our annual budget. Books don't kill children, guns do. No privatization of the library. To quote Pat Burns in your agenda item, "The laws are not being enforced equally or rationally." Mr. Burns, you are the government. You and the majority council are the ones irrationally attacking our library and librarians. You are not governing equally and certainly not rationally. Quote, "All while those that speak out often get attacked for or suppressed from speaking not freely." Well, we have candidates that are clearly up here campaigning. We have proselytizers who are clearly trying to, I don't know, indoctrinate us? Seriously, though, there's a list that you are aware of, because I've emailed it to you. There are members of our community that are being doxxed. You have poisoned the well of Huntington Beach. You disagree? Awesome. There are people that speak out against fellow council members with false insinuations, allegations, they rail against our librarians, and they call them groomers and worse. I'm waiting to hear from the council majority that you support our city employees, the librarians, and that you reject those that on the right are claiming those allegations against them. But the majority council and supporters will continue to demonize books on shelves. You are the local government. You are supposed to be focused on HB. You are supposed to be supporting us here, not going above your rank with culture wars, state laws, federal laws. Of course, we're a First Amendment-supporting, Second Amendment-supporting city. I mean, are we not all Americans in this room?
Thank you. Next speaker?
Pat, if you could look at me when I'm speaking to you. So, Pat, Pat, I'm over here. Pat? Can you stop the clock until he looks at me? Can you stop the clock till he looks at me? Okay. Bethany Webb, 40-plus-year resident of Huntington Beach. I'm wearing a shirt today for National Gun Awareness Month. It has the eight people that died in the biggest mass shooting in Orange County history by a Huntington Beach resident. That's right, the shooter at the Seal Beach Salon was from Huntington Beach. When you take-- I know you're completely aware, which is why you won't look at me when I speak to you, that this is National Gun Awareness Month. This is a month where we celebrate all the proud Americans that died for the Second Amendment right for you to bear any arm you want unfettered, which was not what the framers of the Constitution did. They had the idea of muskets, not semi-automatic machine guns with 100-bullet clips. This is not the first time that the Deplorable Five have put things on the agenda like attacking the library when it's library appreciation time. So I'm going to stop there for a second and say, I just got back from Europe. I spent much of May, I'm sure you guys missed me in Europe. And do you know what people talked about when they found out, when we had conversations about the tattoo on my arm? And they found out it was because of gun violence? They don't want to come to America because of gun violence. This is a tourist town. This is a tourist town in a country where millions of people rejected your orange felon. This is a state where millions of people rejected your orange felon. Yeah, Hunter Biden, go to jail if he's a felon. And you can spend--
Thank you. Next speaker?
Happy Pride Month. This month, we celebrate the members of the LGBTQ community and honor the long-and-during fight that we've had for dignity, safety, and respect. The estimated 16,000 LGBTQ people in Huntington Beach deserve that celebration and recognition. We have an item tonight to affirm that this city is a First and Second Amendment-friendly city. As a city within the United States, it's not in question. We are. Burns, I'd like to recall a meeting discussion from last fall where we discussed the policy on human dignity, where the line items for specific demographics were removed entirely from that policy. Burns, you expressed repeatedly that to call out any specific demographic would be discriminatory to the rest, that we should not call out any specific groups, that we should acknowledge all groups. So why does that not apply here? Should we not be acknowledging all 27 amendments, since to specify only two would make us look as if we don't respect the others? McKean, you said you felt that the city should not have a policy at all, that everyone knows hate is wrong, we don't need to call it out. Why then are you not being consistent here? I actually agree with Burns on one thing. Our First Amendment rights are under threat here in Huntington Beach. What I don't understand is the lack of consistency. So Happy Pride Month, and don't forget, the Constitution, both the First, the Second, and all the other 25, also apply to the rest of us.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Gracie, elected city council members. My name is Dennis, and I'm a 41-year resident of Huntington Beach. In 1965, our government was engaged in a little fracas in Southeast Asia, and he sent me a letter. It said, "Greetings, dude. Your attendance is now required." Four years later, I got to come home. I'm now a father, a husband, a father, and a grandfather. I am a freedom-loving, taxpaying citizen of the United States, and I take my constitutional rights damn seriously. In 1791, when it was being debated about the first 10 amendments to the Constitution, the liberal elites didn't like that idea because it identified specific rights and it placed limits on government. They argued, "This is unnecessary." Tonight, I'm wanting to see which one of our liberal three council members is going to be the first one to say recognition of our constitutional rights is unnecessary. What's unnecessary is Mr. Kalmick's political hissy fit that he's stuck on the agenda tonight.
Thank you. Next speaker, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Steve Kuneff. I'm just here on Item 10. And we're just, since all of us have been playing racquetball in Marina Park for 30 years, I would love to see Option 2, the eight courts. Great plans, great job by Ashley, and we're just here to show our support for that and go for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Steve Bush. I'm also here on Item 10, the Marina Park Redevelopment Act, advocating for Proposal 2, which keeps eight racquetball courts. If you don't know, outdoor racquetball is a big sport, but a lot of cities have torn down their courts. And the Marina Park Racquetball Courts are the shining star in the outdoor racquetball world and nationally recognized as the best racquetball courts in the nation. So taking us from eight to six would significantly diminish our opportunities, and I did send a letter or an email last night for all of you to reference as well. I want to end with just an email that's coming from a 16-year-old junior national champion who couldn't be here tonight. So she asked us to read this. "Hi, good evening. I wanted to speak and just say that keeping eight racquetball courts would be the best decision to make for all of us. I've been competing since I was seven years old, and now I'm 16 years old. I'm a junior professional athlete. I've been competing internationally. I'm in the USA team, and I recently won silver medal in Junior World Nationals in Bolivia, all just because I started playing in those courts in Huntington Beach at Marina Park. I'm currently competing in Guadalajara, Mexico. If I wasn't here, I would be speaking because those courts mean something for me and for my fellow friends who also started playing on those courts. I have a tournament July 12th through 14th in Huntington Beach at the Marina Park, and I would love for you guys to come watch. The dedication and effort I put into this sport is incredible. I've put in great outcomes. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate you all. Victoria Rodriguez."
Thank you. Next speaker? Next speaker.
Hi, my name's Larry Schlenham. I'm a 44-year resident of Huntington Beach. Can't believe I'm going to recite this, but it's the measure that's on your agenda, which is in supporting or making a statement having to do with the First Amendment. The First Amendment, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free speech thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or the right of people peaceably to assemble and to petition government for redress of grievances." That is what we are here for. We are addressing grievances. We've been addressing grievances for the last year and a half, two years, to deaf ears, deaf ears. We're not getting any feedback at all or any movement from the majority for, which is why we're circulating a petition right now, which is why we are getting thousands of signatures eager to, you know, fight and get a vote for the committee that's been established instead of any sort of a dialogue. It's just been railroaded through because there's a majority on the council. And when the RFP comes through on this library, we fully think that it's going to be, you know, the intent is just to not really seriously review it, and that's why the petition is going to be circulated on that, and we're getting even more response from the populace out there eager to sign that petition. It is a petition to have the voices of our population, our city heard, which you are not hearing. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Harry McLaughlin. I'm here in opposition to agenda item number 24-427. I was so moved by Pat Burns's bootlicking submissiveness to MAGA, I was moved to write a poem. With apologies to Mother Goose, it's called Trumpty Dumpty. Trumpty Dumpty at the Washington Mall. Trumpty Dumpty had a great fall. All MAGA's cultists, both women and men, tried to put Trumpty together again. They funneled him money. They echoed his lie. The election was stolen. Stop the steal, was their cry. He ordered them to the congressional halls where they smeared human excrement all over the walls. Their violent, traitorous overthrow failed, and hundreds were tried, and many were jailed, including two of our citizens whose efforts had failed. Trumpty called them all patriots, hostages too, but his own time was coming for the crimes he did do. Convicted in court, now this rapist and felon, he screamed, "It's unfair!" as his cultists were yelling. Under the spell of this criminal clown, on our city council, they wear shirts of brown. The solution is simple and easy to fix. We'll vote them all out in 2026. In the meantime, in prison, their pig god will dwell in a gray-painted concrete cold empty cell. Jail food he'll eat, no Big Macs for his belly. He'll be hawking to inmates, Trump KY jelly.
Thank you. Next speaker. Go ahead. Next speaker.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Dave Reynolds. Been here in HB for almost 50 years. I'm a surfer and a entrepreneur. I'm here to declare my support for resolution 2024-13. I've worked with VHB since its inception, and I support many of their projects and goals. They began as some of my best clients, and now they're my friends and fellow lovers of our Huntington Beach lifestyle. I'm convinced that when VHB does well, our small-to-large businesses do well too. The proposed modification would make HB more competitive with the surrounding areas of Orange County. With the upcoming 2028 Olympic Games ahead of us, we need to show the world that Huntington Beach is and always will be Surf City, USA, a place to live the dream. Thanks for your support.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Matt Kern with the office of State Senator Dave Minn. Senator Minn asked me to read the following statement. "Contrary to the claims made by Huntington Beach City Attorney, the city of Huntington Beach is a subsidiary of the state of California, and the fact that it is a charter city does not make it immune to California's laws. That's why I introduced SB 1174, to send a clear message that local jurisdictions do not have the authority to enact their own election requirements. There are 125 charter cities in California, and we do not want to have 125 unique sets of election protocols. Let me be clear, election integrity is an important priority, just as voter participation is an important priority. And if there were credible evidence presented to me or any other legislature that Huntington Beach was experiencing a systemic problem of voter fraud, it would be our responsibility and duty to address that in the state legislature. But despite all the loud and bombastic claims made by the Huntington Beach City Council Majority that the 2020 election was stolen, they have not presented one shred of evidence to me or anyone else in the legislature of any voter fraud. It is unfortunate that the city council majority is here using its power to engage in frivolous cultural wars rather than actually trying to improve the lives of the residents of Huntington Beach. I urge you to do better. Thank you for your time."
Sir, 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 sir?
Mr. Kern?
Could you take a blue card? Because I would love to meet with you or the senator to inform them about the state constitution and how the voters of Huntington Beach voted for it. Please.
The blue cards are down here.
We've already done it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Linda Moon, 50-year resident. As others have reminded you, June is Pride Month, when cities around the country are showing their compassion by flying the pride flag. But the Huntington Beach City Council Majority chose to demonstrate its disdain for the LGBT community by banning its display. Shame on you. June is also National Gun Violence Awareness Month, intended to raise awareness of the tragedy of the 300 gun-related crimes that occur each day in the U.S., affecting almost every family in America. Cities around the country are recognizing this national shame by supporting reasonable weapons control legislation, universal background checks, assault weapons controls, permitting laws, gun sale regulations, weapons education programs, domestic violence programs, and other measures that will make our country safer. But Huntington Beach is silent. Shame on you. Instead of supporting these national commemorations, Council Member Burns proposes nonsense resolution 24-427, bemoaning the obstruction of what he considers freedoms, the injustice of holding his favorite former president accountable for his crimes and torts under the law, and recognizing Huntington Beach as a First and Second Amendment-friendly city. As you may have forgotten, you took an oath to support and defend the entire constitutions of the United States and the state of California, not just the First and Second Amendments of the U.S. Constitution, which it appears you haven't read. Freedom is not defined as existing only within your standards of morality. Shame on you.
Thank you. Do you have more?
All right. The last group. Lisa, Ken Inoue, Don Ramsey, Rocky McKinnon, Libby, Catherine Goddard, Gorge Washington, Christopher Reenie, and G. Barella. Or Barella. Not sure. Please come forward to the microphones. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Vandermark and city council members. My name is Lisa. I'm a 48-year resident of Huntington Beach. I'm speaking tonight in support of agenda item 24-427. Our First Amendment rights are an invaluable way to gather opposing viewpoints about topics of interest, and this city's council chambers has been a prime example. However, tonight, I'd like to focus more on my support of the designation that Huntington Beach be a Second Amendment-friendly city. As a legal gun owner, it's reassuring that my city respects this right. What most gun, what most gun control advocates don't understand is that the overwhelming majority of legal gun owners are responsible and regard safety as their first priority. As a member of both the NRA and the USCCA, I can testify to that fact. There is immense responsibility, both mentally and legally, to possessing a firearm. That is why the first tool in my gun belt, when possible, will always be 911. While I have the greatest respect and admiration for our law enforcement, I also understand that they can't always be the first to respond. With crime rates on the rise and the surge of criminals entering our sanctuary state, this agenda item could make the criminals think twice about picking Huntington Beach as their destination.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Happy Pride Month. On December 6, 2022, four members of this council took an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States, the other three members of the council having previously taken the same oath. Is there some reason to believe that you've forgotten your oath? Is there a reason to reaffirm your oath in this performance art style less than two years since you made it? By focusing on just two of the 27 amendments? Why not focus on the Sixth Amendment, the one that gives us a right to a speedy trial by a jury in the district where the crime was committed? We all just witnessed that amendment in action in New York for the past couple of months. Why not focus on the Nineteenth Amendment that affirms a woman's right to vote? In this city that has upheld a woman mayor so many times over the years, that amendment should be a favorite. How about the Twenty-Fourth Amendment abolishing poll taxes? Even though you want to check everyone's ID before they vote, you must believe in and support the amendment that makes sure you can't also charge people a tax before they vote. But no, you think it's important to focus on just the First and Second Amendments? Like the prohibition of shouting fire in a crowded theater, all of our rights have limits, even if you don't like them. Proclaiming that HB is a First and Second Amendment-friendly city won't change those limits, even if we are a charter city. The First Amendment addresses government not establishing religion, but this body has routinely limited religious expression during the invocation. We regularly listen to Christian chaplains and once to an Orthodox rabbi perform the invocation. Since the majority were sworn in, there have been no other religions or non-religions represented. That seems to be a government-imposed preference for certain religious doctrine. This resolution talks about open borders, but President Biden just issued an executive order to accomplish much of what could have been done by a bipartisan legislation if only the Republican House would have moved that bill forward. And by the way, how does that relate to the First or Second Amendment? No one is restricting your right to free speech. You are welcome to spew as much nonsense and fox...
Thank you. Next speaker. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Chris Reenie, lifetime Huntington Beach resident, and I'm here in support of item 21. Now, item 21 is not guns, God, and Trump. Let's review. The Second Amendment states that "a well-regulated militia, being necessary to the security of a free state, the rights of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." So, join the National Guard. It's a well-regulated militia. It is patriotic. The First Amendment, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances." This means we are not a theocracy. You can practice a religion and be free of other people imposing their religious values upon you. Being a Jesus freak in the harbor doesn't make you better than a Lutheran, a Methodist, an Episcopalian, a Jew, a Catholic, or a Muslim in town. Our freedom of speech allows us to ask questions like, "Why the library RFP is only one week? Usually, RFPs are a month or longer. If money is so tight, what other RFPs are planned for the city? What happened to the $40 million that City Attorney Gates posted on Nextdoor in January that we had won?" We can petition our grievances until we get answers on these questions. Among other questions, the library RFP has the word "unless" in the application. What does this "unless" mean? We can also petition our concern that the bid from Every Library Institute NFP, which is a nonprofit, will get fair consideration. After all, nonprofits are motivated by mission, not money. A private equity firm like Ellisness is motivated by profit, and look what private equity did to Sears, Red Lobster, and the whole British Railway system. Also, the freedom of speech does not extend to oral defamation. And I'd like to add also that natural law, quoted earlier, is Roman Catholic, and yes, the sky is blue and water is wet. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Go ahead.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Don Ramsey. I'm a 61-year resident of Huntington Beach. I've owned a couple of businesses here in Huntington Beach for 47 years. I'm also involved in a lot of events here in town. I'm sure you know that. I'm here to speak in support of the resolution to, of intent to modify the tourism bid, the T-Bid. Over the next few years, Huntington Beach may lose visitors to other OC and coastal California cities who are all vying to attract visitors and will have new hotel properties, new attractions, or upgrades. If Huntington Beach loses visitor industry market share, the reduced visitors will lead to a decrease in our revenue as well as the city's TOT, sales tax, and parking revenue from visitors. When tourism does well, so do we. Millions of people visit Huntington Beach every year. They spend money in our stores, stay in our hotels, and eat at our businesses, contributing millions of dollars of income to us. Because tourism is one of our income sources, it's important to make sure that visitors are still coming to Huntington Beach with a T-Bid modification increase. VHB can continue to do their job and do that well. The cost of doing business has also increased, and a T-Bid increase will provide the tourism industry with some of our resources to keep the pace with those costs. VHB has been working with city staff to fund new projects in downtown and elevate the visitor experience. That's really good news for us because it also improved downtown, which will also benefit our businesses and Huntington Beach residents. I believe this modification will benefit not only the tourism BID, but also local businesses and owners like me. The city will also benefit from more sales tax and other revenues, so it's really a win-win situation. We hope all the city council members will vote.
Next speaker.
Good evening, mayor, city council, and city officials. My name is Rocky McKinnon of McKinnon Surf and Sup Lessons, and I am speaking in support of adopting resolution number 2024-30 to declare the city's intention to modify the management district plan for the Huntington Beach Tourism Bid. As one of our few contracted surf lesson vendors here in HB, tourism is an essential part of McKinnon Surf and Sup Lessons business. It provides us with opportunities for exposure and growth. Just a couple of weekends ago, I was able to host, on her Instagram, it's called The Chronic Explorer, Kelsey visited here from Canada, and unfortunately, she has to utilize a wheelchair to get around. One of the beautiful things she said about our awesome community is, in one of her posts, was that the shopping and food were amazing, and there were so many options, but what topped the shopping was how accessible everything was, and I think that's something we can all be proud of. She said, "Number one highlight is the tie between accessible surfing and roasting marshmallows." Evidently, I got to take her out on some bigger waves next time. But what I'd like to say is, again, with more visitors coming to Huntington Beach, our business will benefit from this additional influx of visitors wanting to experience surfing here in Surf City, USA. As part of the proposal, funds will also be spent on several improvements in downtown and the surrounding community here in HB, leading to a better business environment and better community for all of us. I strongly believe this modification will benefit not only the tourism bid, but also local businesses. local businesses. We hope that the city council will support the resolution of intent. When tourism does well, Huntington Beach does well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening. I'm Catherine Goddard, and I just want to make a couple of points here, but we understand that you don't really listen to what we are saying because you've already predetermined the four of you that have been selected without benefit of prior participation in the city commissions or committees, or anywhere near the council, as far as I can tell. What has happened here for the city is that, and I notice, I was reading this manual, the city council manual that you're proposing, the updated manual, it retains the part about boards, commissions, and committees, where there will be one or two council members in attendance, and the citizens have input on issues that are before the city. So by successfully closing down most of those committees and commissions and ignoring the three people on the council that aren't part of the majority, we have really closed off citizen input, which brings us here to the dais in the twice a month to say that we don't understand what you're doing and we want the transparency you promised to have. Right now, we're looking for that with the library and with the budget. It is not easy to understand the budget, having spent some time going through it, what's online, what's posted before the meeting. It's not easy to see what's happened over the years and to where we are now. It's equally impossible to understand what you're doing with the library and why the idea of going for a for-profit company to manage the library is even out there. And then you put out an RFP that had exactly seven days before it had to be presented, which meant that you have really, whoever you've been talking to prior, and there are lots of rumors about what's been going on because none of us know. So what I'm here to do is to urge you to set up now, however you wish, open participation from the community.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Honorable Members of City Council. My name is Kenny Nowey. I'm a 51-year resident of Huntington Beach. I'm making my comments today in the memory of and honor of Fred Provantche, who was a gay man in my vice chair in the Human Relations Task Force, and in the memory of Dr. Ralph Bauer and Shirley Detloff, who are Republicans, Democrats, but nevertheless worked together to improve the quality of life for the city of Huntington Beach. Please note that my comments concerning the proposed budget are not being made to place any blame. Rather, it is my hope that this review of the budget will be a call to action for all of you to work together to make things better for our city. Let me give you some facts from the budget. Page 27 reflects the fact that the city projects an almost an $11 million deficit for the year-end at June 30, 2025. The detailed comparative financial information in budget document the fact that the revenues of the city have not and will not keep up with the increase of the cost of goods and services paid by the city. As a result of the looming financial challenges facing the city, I respectfully request that future city council meetings provide periodic financial information so that the residents of the city can evaluate the financial health of the city. I've made this request before. It's unfortunately not been followed. Failure to tend to the financial health of the city, and this is for all of you here on either side of the aisle to know, will result in significant reduction in services and possibly the need to increase revenue. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is George Barrera, a local long-distance, long-living resident here. I went to Dwyer, Smith, Huntington Beach High School. I'm here for the racquetball court on Marina Park. I was supposed to read that email. I didn't think I was going to get a chance, but I'm the coach for that young lady that started playing racquetball at the courts. I've coached many other players as well. We produce a lot of national champions, world champions, and I would like to just say, please keep the eight courts. From experience, I ran a lot of national tournaments at those particular courts, and to run a tournament with six courts is very impossible to run. The more courts, the more people, the more revenue we get for the city. Please keep the courts, eight courts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening, Council. Thank you for having me. I'm going to piggyback off what Ken was talking about just a moment ago. I'm here tonight to discuss our looming budget deficit and the struggling Californian economy. To get to the point, our people, our businesses, and our budget will all benefit from zoning reforms. These zoning reforms should seek to let the free market help solve the great Californian housing shortage. This shortage and the zoning reforms which fuel them rob, we the people, of an abundant and affordable housing stock. They rob our people of the tax dollars that Michael Gates spends fighting his lawsuits, which we see in the 30% increase in his department's budget. They rob our businesses of both customers and workers. They rob our construction companies and their workers of their work and their way of life. They rob our city's coffers of the property taxes that new development brings. California's economy continues to struggle because of our statist regulatory regime, which local governments have traditionally embraced. We no longer have a country, we no longer have Native Americans to steal land from. We have to figure out how to share the land we have. It's the unfortunate truth of why this wasn't a problem 150 years ago, but you can see it in London. They had this problem in the 1940s. They had this problem in the 1850s, when the Industrial Revolution happened. The problem is so bad that economists estimate that the blitz has grown London's economy by 10%. God bless the German bombing campaign. That's how bad these zoning reforms are, or these zoning laws are. Yesterday, Rubio's closed more than 40 restaurants, including two here in Huntington Beach. Rite Aid has closed stores. Tesla left before that. How many companies have to leave? How bad does our economy have to get before we do something about this urgent problem?
Thank you. Next speaker?
All right. I'm in full support of Item Number 21. The First and the Second Amendment is our most important God-given rights, which protects us from tyrants. The Lord says to pray for your enemies, so I'm going to pray for my enemies. Pray for the enemies of Huntington Beach before me, and pray for the enemies of this great American republic. Matthew 5:44 says, "But I say unto you, love your enemies and pray for them that persecute you." Psalms 59:1 says, "Deliver me from my enemies, O God; protect me from those who rise up against me. Deliver me from evil-doers and save me from bloodthirsty men. See how they lie and wait for me. Fierce men conspire against me for no offense or sin of mine, O Lord." Exodus 4:21, "The Lord said to Moses, 'When you return to Egypt, see that you perform before Pharaoh all the wonders I have given you, the power to do; but I will harden his heart, so that he will not let the people go.'" So my prayer is that God hardens your heart. As we see after each of the first five plagues, Pharaoh's heart became harder, or he hardened his own heart. Then in Plagues 6 through 10, we see in this pattern change. For the last five times, the author of Exodus, likely Moses, writes that God hardened Pharaoh's heart. So my prayer is that all evil-doers and traitors to this republic harden their hearts, as Pharaoh did. The more you harden your hearts, the more you reveal your evil deeds. My prayers have been answered. The Kami III keep hardening their hearts, especially Dan the Atheist, who lurkingly looks around the room during the invocations, and in doing so, opens the eyes of the sleeping giant that is coming in 2024. Vote Chad Williams, Don Kennedy, and Butch Twain for Huntington Beach City Council.
Thank you. Thank you. You might want to bring the microphone down. Your microphone.
Okay, I'm here to make money for Huntington Beach, increase our revenue, and one thing is to stop the expenditures and all the appeals by the attorney. The expenditures and the appeals of the lawsuits against the state of California, whether we like them or not. Each lawsuit has been turned down, even on appeal, so it's spending a fortune. Please stop spending our money that way. And adopt the housing element. People in Huntington Beach who work for Huntington Beach cannot afford to live here. Their children, people who live in Huntington Beach and have homes, their children cannot afford to buy a house here. Housing is that expensive. That's why I encourage developers. Developers are frothing at the bit to get in here and build housing up and down, up and down the area. And other cities, most of the other Orange County cities have adopted the housing element. So as I said, people who live and work here can't even afford to buy a house here. What do homes do? What do developers do? They produce money for us. They pay us money to develop here. They pay us money for permits. People who live here, who buy houses, who get houses, they pay money for property taxes, sewerage construction, all of the fees that we have in our budget. That's what housing does for any city. And also, it helps, it'll bring in customers to our businesses, large and small, Home Depot, Lowe's, Costco. That's what housing, we build housing, and we're helping our businesses create wealth as well. And they pay money and taxes. So that's what I have to say about our budget, and I hope you enhance it by adopting the housing element.
Thank you.
Two minutes, Gracie. You got to give us three. You got to give us three. First is, hey, everybody, please look up Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. It's called the CAFER. Every city has to have it. That's the only one that tells you how much money that they're actually making, and it's close to eight times as much as they say. The budget and how much they're making is two different things. Look at it. And by the way, it's really great to see all these people because, you know something? This is way better than sports. All right? Who won the Super Bowl seven years ago? Who gives a shit? This affects our lives. Yeah? Mayor, you know something? Tony, you owed me, it's been two years since you promised me that you were going to refund my money for my son's car and my car after you heard my side of the story and Eric's side of the story. And you never gave me a single, I sent you emails. I don't understand it, and I'm really disappointed. Okay? And we're going to talk about this, and I hope this time you're going to respond. The next thing is, because I filled out all the required paperwork, I detailed the cost as requested, but still, still waiting. Okay? And then, you know, if I owed the state money, if I owed the state money, they'd be charging me money, I mean, extra money, and they'd be threatening me to go to jail, every single thing, but over here, no consequences, nothing. And, you know, I don't even want to talk about this. I'm looking at jail time because of this guy. He's got three attorneys after me for saying, because I wanted to protect my car, that I showed you guys, and you even said with Eric that I was in the right and I was going to get refunded my money, and you asked for the bills, and I sent, I gave you the bills with the shoes. Eric wouldn't take the shoes. They were too afraid. They thought they were bombs. But anyway, please, this is so wrong, but the whole thing is nothing-
Thank you.
Four people should not change-
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comments. Your time's up. Time's up. That concludes public comments. We're done.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to council committee appointment announcement. Do any council members have any appointments to announce? AB 1234 reporting, does anybody have anyone to report? Openness and negotiations, does anyone have anything to disclose? City managers report. City manager, do you have anything to report?
Chief McCoy is going to provide a presentation on the importance of CPR and some teamwork and cooperation between PD, Fire, and our citizens.
Thank you.
Chief?
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Is it on?
Now you're on.
Chief, thank you so much for the opportunity to highlight the amazing first responder team here in Huntington Beach. Both of the calls that I'm going to talk about tonight highlight the incredible level of collaboration and teamwork that happens on a daily basis with our public safety members, whether it's the Police Department, Fire Department, or our Huntington Beach Fire Department Marine Safety Division. The first call I want to highlight happened with HB PD Officer Sean McDonough, Huntington Beach Fire Department Captain Shawna Parkinson, Engineer Kyle Dyke, firefighter paramedic Josh Heink, and firefighter paramedic Ryan Smith. On April 24, 2024, Huntington Engine 41 and Ambulance 46 responded to a reported cardiac arrest call. They arrived to find Huntington Beach police officers on scene applying an AED and performing chest compressions. Prior to HB PD arrival, the patient's son was providing compressions through directions from our emergency medical dispatcher on the phone. HB PD reported to the HBFD one defibrillation had been applied by the AED prior to our arrival. Huntington Beach Fire Department firefighter paramedics assumed patient care from the Huntington Beach Police Department and began performing advanced life support measures. The patient regained pulses and the return of spontaneous circulation prior to leaving the scene. Care measures were continued, and the patient was transported to a local hospital designated as a cardiovascular receiving center, which have physicians dedicated to providing advanced cardiac care, and the patient made a full recovery. This call was an excellent demonstration of the chain of survival in cardiac arrest cases, which include bystander hands-only CPR performed through the direction of a trained emergency medical dispatcher. These classes are offered for free to our residents here in Huntington Beach that are members of our Fire Med program, and all that information can be found on our city website. It also highlighted early defibrillation by rapid deployment of an AED, which all of our police department units carry that are out on the street, and continued chest compressions by the Huntington Beach Police Department. The second call that I want to talk about was involving Huntington Beach Police Officer Brian Jensen, Huntington Beach Fire Department Captain Zach Wright, Engineer Glenn Pavlosky, firefighter paramedic Robert Riley, and firefighter paramedic Sean King. On October 24, 2023, Huntington Engine 45 and our ambulance 45 responded for a report of a 40-year-old in cardiac arrest at a local country club. Units arrived on scene to find Huntington Beach Police Department on scene rendering aid through the use of an AED again and providing chest compressions. Huntington Beach Police Department reported the AED defibrillated two times this time. Firefighter paramedics continued care and provided advanced life support measures, including advanced airway management and cardiac medications. This patient as well regained full pulses and the return of spontaneous circulation on scene after the care of our treatment team. Care measures were continued, and the patient was transported to a local hospital also designated as a cardiovascular receiving center, where the patient received continued cardiac care and made a full recovery. This call is yet another great example of the coordinated effort between the police and fire departments in our city with a rapid response of an AED, rapid early defibrillation, and compressions with timely response by firefighter paramedics to provide advanced life support. Once again, this is a really great time for us to just really praise the collaboration we have between the police and fire departments, our integrated responses, and also, we want to once again advertise that we do have free CPR classes for citizens in our city that are members of the Fire Med program, and all that information can be found on the fire department website.
I had the opportunity to meet two of the residents that you mentioned, and they were so thankful for our police, our fire department, and they were so impressed with how well you guys worked together. So thank you. Okay, now we're going to move on to the consent calendar. I'd like to pull Item Number 10. Is there anyone else that would like to pull an item?
Five, six, and seven.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? What item?
Councilmember Moser, number 14. CalMec, five, six, and seven.
I'd like to remove the, move the remainder of the consent calendar.
Second.
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 We'll go ahead and vote on consent items three, four, eight, nine, 11, 12, 13, 15, 16, and 17, as amended by supplemental communication. Councilmember Moser.
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Calmick?
Aye.
Items pass seven zero.
Thank you. Councilmember Calmick, item five.
I wanted to pull this item. I didn't support this creation of this committee, I think. I don't know, at this point, I'm kind of reading through the applications. I'm not gonna be in support of the formation of this. I think we've got more important things to address in the city, and I think having staff resources associated with this isn't necessarily something that I wanna do. So I'll be, I won't be supporting this item.
Okay. Councilmember Bolton?
Yeah, I also won't be supporting the item. We have a historic resources board. I think we could consult if we absolutely, positively have to create a new city celebrations calendar. I think this is duplicative, and especially the budget environment that we're gonna be talking about a little bit later. You know, we need to be saving money where we can. So I won't be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move the item.
All right, take a vote. Councilmember Moser?
No.
Bolton?
No.
Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Calmick?
No.
All right, the item passes four, three. Moser, Bolton, and Calmick voting no.
Thank you. Councilmember Calmick, number six.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to, first of all, thank Deputy City Attorney Catherine June for her hard work on putting this item together for the council manual. This is a very complex document that kind of puts together disparate resolutions over the years that the city councils have passed, of yesteryear have passed, and it's a yeoman's job of putting that together. So thank you. I had two small changes in the document that I at least wanted to address currently before this was voted on. One is setting a rubric for public comment times. I think we've heard for the last five years, at least, an inconsistency of what the public expects to be able to come down here and make a public comment a time. And so, you know, I've kind of felt that we should be able to start our business meeting by nine o'clock. And so I think kind of setting that as the rubric between six and nine o'clock, how many of our speakers we have to be able to establish and meet that goal. I think it helps our residents at home kind of gear, if it's a very popular item, that they may only have 90 seconds or one minute. If it's, you know, a slower meeting agenda, that they'll potentially have the three minutes. But still leave it up to the mayor to have discretion, but at least I would say set a framework if the council was interested in that, just so people kind of have an idea of what, of what to expect. And the second item was flying flags at half-staff for all former electeds. Currently, it reads that it's only for current electeds. We don't have that many former electeds. And I think that for those of us that have stood for election in the past, I think that would be well worth it to honor them, to fly our flags at half-staff. I think there's probably less than a dozen former electeds, city treasurers, clerks, and attorneys and council members left that are still alive. So I didn't think that it would be that big of a burden on staff if one of them were to pass away, so folks could, you know, at least ask like, hey, why the flags are flying at half-staff? So those were the only two changes that I would make, and I would, I would move the rest of the council manual with that framework to let staff figure out what the time is, but just say that we'd like to start our business meeting by nine o'clock and setting the rubric for our times somewhere in that, in that realm. But still leaving the mayor having full discretion in that. So that'll be my motion.
Second.
I am, I would just like to thank Catherine June for all of the work that she's done on this. I too agree with the recommendations there. But thank you, Catherine, for all of your hard work. And I think this might be the only opportunity to mention it. So I just wanted to thank you for all of your work overall. I know you'll be leaving, and you probably don't want me to talk about that right now, but I'm going to anyway. And so I just wanted to say what a great job that you have done and how proud that you've made the city and how much work you have done. It's truly appreciated. So thank you.
Okay, so, Councilmember Strickland.
I agree with one of your amendments. I don't agree with the other one. So I do think that we should honor those who have done public service for Huntington Beach. So I will be voting no on your original amendment because I only support half of it. But I will probably do after that, hopefully, maybe it passes, but if it fails, I'll, I'll do a substitute motion to add that one part into it.
Okay.
Because I do think it should be the mayor's prerogative on the timing of everything.
So just a point of order. Is that a substitute motion? Okay, it's not a substitute motion.
So if he has a substitute motion, we have to vote on first?
No, aren't we voting on the?
We can just vote on the regular, and then somebody can make a motion.
We're voting on your substitute.
Yeah, and if it fails, then we can make another motion to, after that.
Just to note, though, you mentioned that you wanted the mayor to have the ability to make the change, right? But other than that, you were fine with it?
Right.
I think that that's what Councilmember Calmick said, correct? That the mayor would still have the ability?
That's not the way I heard it articulated. The way I heard it was that we would start at nine and figure it out from there. I, I think when it comes to the speeches, look, I made a commitment to three minutes as mayor. I think every mayor has that prerogative to do what they want to do to get a speedy meeting and a business meeting. So therefore, I, from what I've heard from Councilman Calmick, I would not support his motion, but I do like one of the amendments that he brought forward.
Yeah, I mean, I had stated that it would still be the mayor's prerogative to set times. It was effectively putting in the council manual a rubric, a framework of what folks could expect on a regular basis and giving the future mayor some sort of direction as to what would, I think, would make sense. But it still would 100% be up to the mayor's prerogative to deviate from that, as it is now, because our council agenda says three minutes, mayor's prerogative. It's just, it was just a kind of a help for the residents coming down, but you don't support that then.
Thank you. Ready to vote?
All right, so just to be clear, you mentioned that mayor's prerogative would remain, although business would start by 9:00 PM. Is that correct?
The goal would be to start our council meeting, the business portion of the council meeting at 9:00 PM. So to have staff work on a framework that would work that number into so many, you know, from one to 40, get, we'd have three, three minutes. From one to 70, we'd have two minutes, whatever, just for folks to have an expectation. But again, mayor would still have the ability to set that. And then, the second excuse was to fly the flags at half-staff for all former elected officials, all current and former elected officials upon their passing.
Okay. All right, let's vote. Councilmember Moser?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
No.
Vandermark?
No.
Strickland?
No.
McKeon?
No.
Calmick?
Aye.
Motion fails, three, four.
So I would like to make a substitute motion that we do the council manual as described and add an amendment that any elected official or city official from Huntington Beach, if they pass away, we, we do honor them by putting the flag at half-staff.
Elected.
You said city official as well as elected official? I just wanna clarify.
Yeah, I did, but we could, we can make it elected official. That's fine, elected official.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Let's go ahead and move the substitute motion. Councilmember Moser?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Calmick?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Councilmember Calmick, number seven.
I just wanted to pull this item. I, I don't think, I'm in agreement with what the bill is attempting to do, and as we've stated, ad nauseam here on this issue. So I won't be supporting this, so I just wanted to pull the item.
I'd like to speak on the item. I do believe that Attorney General Bonta, when he's going after us, he said it was, you know, our voter ID was illegal. Clearly, I believe it's a frivolous lawsuit. That's why Senator Min is creating this bill. Attorney General Bonta has already lost in court case law, Redondo Beach as well as San Francisco. He knows it's a frivolous lawsuit. He know he'll lose because the fact of the matter is, it's in the state constitution that we have the ability to do this and voter ID. And I would also point out to the staff member, if he's still here from Senator Min, that because it's in the state constitution, his bill is worthless. I do believe that we should oppose the bill because if he amends the bill, and the only way it becomes relevant is if Senator Min makes it a constitutional amendment. If he makes it a constitutional amendment, then it would have an ability to affect what we do here in Huntington Beach. Otherwise, his bill is worthless. But anyways, I, I think we should oppose this or actually support seven, that we oppose as a city, his bill, because we in Huntington Beach voted for voter ID and were the first city in California to do just such.
Anyone else? Councilmember Bolton?
Thank you, Mayor. So what's in the constitution, if I understand correctly, is that charter cities can make decisions about municipal affairs. The issue is what is a municipal affair? And what the bill is saying is voter ID is a statewide concern and not a municipal affair. So I think it's a little misleading to say it's in the constitution because it's not in the constitution that you can have voter ID. So I just wanna be clear about that, that that is not in the constitution. And so I, I'm not done. I will not be supporting the item. And I also wanna point out that we missed two opportunities to support bills that promote local control, more local control over sober living homes while we're out here chasing windmills. And so I think residents should be asking why we missed those two opportunities to support bills. I think we supported Lori Davies' bill, which is great, but there were two more, including one that explicitly said that localities should have the ability to regulate sober living homes along with states, because the state is, I guess, stretched too thin to do a really great job of regulating sober living homes. So I just wanted to make that point as well.
I'd just say I love, I love how the state has their catch-all. Every agenda or mandate they wanna push is a matter of statewide concern. Housing, how, and that allows them to subvert local control. Housing is a matter of statewide concern, except for Marin County, where Gavin Newsom lives. And then voter ID is a matter of statewide concern, so they can subvert our local control, especially as a charter city. So I just, I love when they use that matter of statewide concern.
Two, if I might, Mayor?
Yes.
Two points. Let's also be clear, that argument that my colleague made was the argument that Bonta made and lost in court in Redondo Beach versus Bonta, and also San Francisco versus Bonta. So that's number one. Number two, you know, there's no way, we don't have enough time here on this dais to do the thousands of different destructive bills come from Sacramento that affect Huntington Beach. So we don't have the time to make a point on every one of them, but this is one that directly goes after the voters of Huntington Beach, and that's why we're standing here. Because the voters voted for voter ID, whether you like it or not. It's not as for, we put it to the vote, and the people of Huntington Beach voted for this item.
And the people of Huntington Beach voted for it without knowing the ramifications of that vote.
I'll move the item. Second.
All right, motion by Strickland, second by Vandermark. Councilmember Moser?
No.
Bolton?
No.
Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Calmick?
No.
Item passes four, three. Moser, Bolton, Calmick voting no.
Thank you. Moving on to item 10. I had this item pulled just to, for some clarification based on the recommendations. Ashley, could you please explain? The confusion.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. This evening, we are pleased to present two options for your consideration for the Marina Park reconfiguration project. Turning on the clicker helps. Marina Park is located at 5562 Cross Drive at the corner of Edinger and Graham, adjacent to Marina High School. Marina Park was open to the public in 1979 and is one of the city's community parks. The park currently has the Helen Murphy Branch Library, a playground, two basketball courts, eight racquetball courts, four tennis courts, a parking lot, passive green space, and a combined concession and restroom facility, and three Little League fields operated by Huntington West Little League. A portion of the Little League fields sit on the Huntington Beach Union High School District property. We have consulted with David Vohl's designs to conduct community input and develop iterations of the conceptual plan as that input was collected. Since the project was initiated in 2023, there have been two community outreach meetings, two virtual surveys, a series of stakeholder meetings, and an Arborist report completed. A project website was developed and has remained available for the entirety of the project. Three stakeholder groups were identified as part of this project: Huntington West Little League, Helen Murphy Branch Library staff and Marina High School and Huntington Beach Union High School District staff. Each group was able to share their desired improvements for the park space and subsequent design elements on city property have been included for your consideration this evening. Approximately 40 community members participated in the first community meeting, and 114 virtual surveys were collected. From this feedback, a number of top priorities were identified, including the need for more parking, desired improvements to the playground, concession stand, fields, tennis courts, and library, and to keep the tennis courts and to add pickleball courts. At the second community meeting, three conceptual plans were presented. Each option included various parking layouts, reconfiguration of existing amenities, and the addition of pickleball courts. A total of 317 virtual surveys were collected. 173 respondents preferred option two, which included increased parking, installation of six pickleball courts, removal of the racquetball courts, and enhancements to existing facilities. 144 responses were from outside of Huntington Beach, and all were in favor of option one, which improved existing amenities and preserved the racquetball courts in their current location. On July 14th, 2023, staff presented option one to the Community and Library Services Commission. This proposed plan includes an increase of 73 parking spaces to 173 total stalls, upgraded concession and restroom building, two playground areas and shade structures, a basketball court, existing tennis courts to be upgraded, overlay of four pickleball courts on one tennis court for teaching, two new pickleball courts, six racquetball courts to be reconfigured so that all bays can be viewed from the center of the park versus the 360-degree configuration of the current racquetball courts. This new reconfiguration is preferred by Huntington PD as it applied community policing through environmental design or SEP TED principles, and upgrades to the baseball fields to include new bleachers, ADA access ramps, batting cages, turf irrigation, and other pertinent improvements on city property. As a pilot program to understand the potential noise impacts pickleball may generate at the park and to assist with meeting demands for more courts, we painted four pickleball court overlays on one of the tennis courts. To date, we have, to date, we have not received any noise complaints and are only requested to continue adding more courts to our inventory. Space is earmarked for a future redesign of Helen Murphy Branch Library. The Little League expressed an interest for field lighting to be installed, and Marina High School requested a perimeter fence be installed along the exterior of the baseball fields to create a closed campus. Future phases of this project to explore options for a new library Future phases of this project to explore options for a new library and field improvements on high school district property will be explored and brought back to City Council consideration at a later date. During the commission meeting, public comments were received advocating to maintain the current number of racquetball courts. As a result, the commission approved and amended plan we are referring to as option two. All amenities in option two remain the same as option one, except for the reduction of one new pickleball court and the addition of two racquetball courts. So option two would have one dedicated pickleball court and eight racquetball court bays. Funding in the amount of $475,000 was included in the city's fiscal year 2223 Capital Improvement Program budget for design, development, and construction documents. Funding is sufficient to move forward with the next phase of design. Additional funds will be needed to be identified and budgeted as the project proceeds into the construction phase. This evening, staff are requesting City Council to approve one of two conceptual plan design options for the Marina Park reconfiguration conceptual plan and authorize staff to move forward with initiating development of the design and bid package for construction of the updated facility. Louise Pedraza from David Vohl Designs and I are here and happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. You guys, you surveyed the community. Based on the answers and the feedback from the community, was there more interest in a pickleball or was there more interest in a handball?
So from residents within Huntington Beach, there was more interest in pickleball, and then we did see a surge of respondents from outside of Huntington Beach advocating for maintaining the racquetball courts.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just say I've learned many things since being elected to City Council, and one that is paramount is that residents want more pickleball courts. It's a big deal, guys. So I think option one is a good balance. I know, I appreciate the racquetball players mentioning what they did, but I still believe six courts is sufficient. And option one provides two pickleball courts. So as such, the residents, to me, are paramount, and I will be moving option one.
Councilmember Calmick.
Thank you. So with regard to racquetball, what's, sorry, what's down at Edison? There's six racquetball courts or handball courts down at Edison?
Off the top of my head, I believe it's six courts.
Yeah, I looked at it. There's six things that look similar to what here. Those are the same type of courts?
Yes.
Okay. And the reason they're being reconfigured in the area which they are, could you talk a little bit about why they're being moved?
Sure. So currently, in order to see into each of the bays, you have to travel 360 degrees around the racquetball courts, and so, which makes it more difficult for police to understand what's going on on either side of the courts. And so through SEPTED, which is Community Policing Through Environmental Design, the request has been for police to be able to see through the park and into the bays from a central location at the park, which then provides just a more efficient way of monitoring what's going on and provides less hiding spots for people to maybe be doing things that aren't racquetball-related.
Well, I appreciate staff taking the time to kind of walk through all of the issues and kind of the oddity that half the parks on HB Union High School District land. You know, just for those that are in the racquetball community, there's not necessarily money right now to even start construction on this. This is to go to docs and then put that on a shelf looking for funding. So this isn't going away in the very, very near future. So everything will still be status quo for probably two years on the inside?
Correct. Design and construction documents typically take about a year to develop.
Okay, so there's some time to work on things. Okay. All right, yeah, I'll be supportive of two racquetball courts. I too have learned that we need as many racquetball courts as we can. Oh, pickleball, sorry, pickleball courts, sorry. Pickleball courts as we can. It's every, that's the only thing I think we get emails on, not related to everything else. But so I'll be supporting option one, a pickleball court. So I think are something that we've, residents funding to be asked for for numerous years.
Anyone else? Okay, could you please call them?
All right, we'll go ahead and vote. Option one, Councilmember Moser.
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKean?
Yes.
Calmick? Passes seven-zero.
Thank you. Councilmember Moser, number 14.
Yes, I just wanted to bring forward this Jamboree E&amp;A extension. I think that it's great for the community just to hear about this project from inception or more about the history and learn where it's gone before we make a vote.
Steve Holtz and Lieutenant Smith are going to give the presentation on this.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Steve Holtz from the Community Development Department. With me is Lieutenant Smith from the Police Department. And this item before you this evening is an 18-month exclusive negotiations agreement with Jamboree Housing for the Pathways Development Project. In the summer of 2020, the Housing Authority initiated efforts to acquire the site on Beach Boulevard where the Temporary Navigation Center is located. Initially, half of the property was purchased in August while the lease was secured for the remaining portion. Staff then prepared the site and, in partnership with Mercy House, opened the Navigation Center shortly after Thanksgiving. About a month later, in January 2021, the Housing Authority completed the purchase of the second half of the site. Moving forward in June 2022, the Housing Authority authorized the Executive Director to enter into an Exclusive Negotiations Agreement, or E&amp;A, with Jamboree Housing to plan a new permanent facility that aimed to include a navigation center, various support services, and transitional and affordable housing. After careful consideration of multiple options, in July 2023, the Housing Authority approved the Pathways Project Development Concept. This initiative envisions a multi-use facility encompassing a navigation center and permanent supportive housing. Although the E&amp;A with Jamboree expired in December 2023, staff and Jamboree have continued to work closely to identify potential funding sources and refine project renderings. At this time, staff recommends that the Housing Authority approve another 18-month E&amp;A. This would authorize Jamboree, with approval of the Executive Director, to pursue funding for the development. To provide context, the Navigation Center serves as a low-barrier shelter with comprehensive services guiding homeless individuals to permanent housing by offering temporary accommodations and connecting residents with essential services and assistance in obtaining vital records necessary for transitional and permanent housing. Permanent supportive housing provides permanent housing with supportive services, combining rental assistance with specialized assistance for households with at least one member facing a disability, aiding them in achieving and maintaining housing stability. Jamboree has worked with their architect to develop illustrative renderings that capture the essence of the project concept while trying to be compatible with the surrounding area. The key aspect of this design was the thoughtful separation of the Navigation Center on the lower level, accessible from Beach Boulevard, and the permanent supportive housing on the upper levels with dedicated access for residents from Cameron Lane in the rear. This intentional layout not only ensures functionality, but also contributes to the project's integration within the community. It's important to note that while these project renderings are illustrative and carefully crafted, they have yet to undergo review by planning staff and are subject to potential adjustments to ensure compliance with city code requirements. This rendering provides a view of the backside of the project from Cameron Lane. From this perspective, the focus is on the permanent supportive housing portion of the project, highlighting the layout and architectural features that contribute to a supportive living environment for the residents.
One of the greatest concerns is the impact on the surrounding community that this development will have, both aesthetically and through its use. From a public safety perspective, it's also examined through the lens of crime prevention through environmental design. Our goal is to have a location that does not draw attention to itself as a unique fixture while enhancing the founding community and providing valuable services to the entire city of Huntington Beach. The area surrounding this project location on Beach Boulevard includes recently upgraded facilities such as the HB Oasis Permanent Supportive Housing Project, the Oceana Apartments and Wind River Park Office Complex, and the Memorial Care Building, in addition to several well-established professional complexes. The Cameron Lane side is a mix of multi- and family residential with commercial, which we are cognizant of. Construction of the Huntington Beach Navigation Center already provides some upgrades in the area, including the addition of sidewalks adjacent to the property and mitigation of hazards. And we hope developing this site will continue to improve and enhance this area. As Steve mentioned, we take this into account. We intend on having services to the residential permanent supportive housing accessible from Cameron Lane and access to the Navigation Center will be from Beach Boulevard to mitigate the impact on Cameron Lane residents. Jamboree Housing intends to aggressively apply for funding to offset cost of the program. While this is not an all-inclusive list of sources, of funding sources, these are the ones they have had success in securing funding for other projects. Applying for these funding opportunities will not commit Jamboree or the city to accepting them. We are asking that you give the Executive Director the authority to approve applications for funding to eliminate potential delays for the time-sensitive applications. Although Jamboree Housing will be the applicant in managing these funds, when funding is awarded, the awards will be brought back before the Housing Authority for support and acceptance so that the Authority and all of our community will be aware of conditions attached to these opportunities. In closing, we are asking you authorize the Director to sign an 18-month extension of the Exclusive Negotiations Agreement with Jamboree Housing so they can continue to refine the plans and submit applications for funding. Furthermore, we are asking you authorize the Director to approve the submission of applications for funding by Jamboree Housing for the Pathways Project. We thank you for your time. And staff, along with Michael Massey, the Executive Vice President and Chief Development Officer from Jamboree Housing, are available to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any councilmembers have questions? Councilmember Moser.
Well, first, thank you very much for providing that. I really appreciate it. I'm definitely going to support the item, but I think it's important to kind of go through the history of what we've been working on for many years and just to talk about it a little bit more. One, you know, this is an investment, this investment in a permanent shelter with supportive services plus permanent supportive housing, so housing with wraparound services is ultimately an investment in our community. It's an investment that can lead to improved economic, social, and health outcomes for all residents in our community. Obviously, we saw the design, which is also, I really wanted to, I know it still needs to be approved in the longer term, but like the initial design is, I wanted everyone to be able to see that because I think it's quite beautiful and would look incredible on beach. Certainly, it's an upgrade from what we have now, so thank you for sharing that. I also wanted to mention that Jamboree has been an excellent partner along this whole process and has been working with us to try to figure out the many parts of this project, and there are many. And that leads me to this last bit, which is the funding opportunities, which I know you have on here. It's my understanding, having worked on this project in the past and having spoken to the folks at Jamboree as well, that it's going to take a stack of funding options to be able to actually, to do this, you know. And I believe that we can, but I did have a question earlier, which was, you know, because we don't have a certified housing element, are any of these potential funding opportunities unavailable to us? Assuming we wouldn't have one later, and I hope that we will.
So we have asked that question of Jamboree, and it has come to our attention that the Orange County Housing Finance Trust, for one of their programs does require a housing element and for another of their programs does not. And so it really depends on which program they would be applying for. But I'm not aware of any of these other programs requiring a certified housing element, and part of the reason for that is because Jamboree would be the applicant and not the city.
Right. But for that particular one, that would be a potential problem.
It could be.
The good news, though, is that that doesn't come until April as far as the application timeline. And it's my understanding that for Orange County Housing Finance Trust funds availability, you still have to apply, is that the city with which that's happening in would have to be, have a certified housing element at the time of funding. So we have a little bit of time, and so that's a potential positive. But I think it's important for us to consider as we move forward because it's, we're going to require really every bit of funding that's available to us to cobble together to have this project happen. So thank you for updating us on that. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, Mayor, real quick. Lieutenant Smith, could you go to slide four? Just want to kind of refresh everyone's memory, no, the next one, sorry. Yeah, just refresh everyone's memory that the reason why we chose this option is because it shields the Navigation Center visually from Beach Boulevard. It's a component that we need. And then by continuing to have success in reducing our homelessness as we've been having, eventually in the future, we can convert these supportive housing units to potentially commercial space along Beach Boulevard. So just want to reiterate that this plan gives us like maximum flexibility.
Can I say something about that? Is it true that the housing units would not be able to transition to commercial space?
The Navigation Center portion is designed as flux space, and so it could, well, it can't grow. But if our housing population shrinks and the need for a Navigation Center reduces, it could shrink, and then that space could become other uses.
But with regards to the permanent supportive housing?
Those are going to be apartments, and by the funding that Jamboree will be applying for, there will be deed restrictions for those to be apartments.
Thank you.
Councilmember, Mayor Potem, Burns.
All these funds that are being looked at, potential funding opportunities, ultimately, they're all taxpayer-funded programs, are they not?
I believe that they are.
It's funding that's out there in existence that's typically accounted for, and it's our opportunity to grab from those existing pots.
Yeah, it's just, didn't they cut some programs at the state level because of the financial difficulties? I just hope we don't get too deep into this, and then some of this funding that was promised to us falls through halfway through the build, and we're, hopefully, we don't get stuck with the costs. That's it, it's just taxpayer money, that's all I was wondering.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I make a motion.
All right. Councilmember Moser?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKean?
Yes.
Calmick?
Aye.
Item passes seven-zero.
Thank you. Now we're moving on to the public hearing for item 24-406. This is a time and place fix for the public hearing related to the proposed modification of the Huntington Beach Tourism Business Improvement District. I would now ask the city clerk to report on the notice of this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. The notice of public hearing has been completed in the manner and form as required by Section 36636 of the California Streets and Highways Code.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing now. Do we have anyone signed up to speak? Oh, I'm sorry, the report.
Yeah, staff's going to give a report first.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm Chris Casanova, the city's Economic Development Manager. Tonight's public hearing is the third and final action related to the modification of the Tourism Business Improvement District, or T-Bid. For background, I'll provide a brief recap of the T-Bid and VHB's request for modification. The T-Bid was formed in 2014 pursuant to state law. Its purpose is to market Huntington Beach to increase overnight room sales. Funding is derived from assessments, which are collected from our lodging properties, which are then paid by guests, and the T-Bid runs through 2028 and is governed by a management district plan. The district has approximately 21 hotels motels and 200 short-term rentals. The current assessment rate is 4% of gross revenue, which is separate from the city's 10% transient occupancy tax. All city lodging properties, including those in Sunset Beach, collect the assessments, which total approximately $7 million annually. Visit Huntington Beach, a nonprofit organization, serves as the T-Bid Owners Association, and they're responsible for implementing the programs and budget. The city and VHB have an agreement to manage the district, and assessments are collected by the city and then distributed to VHB. So tonight's request from VHB, the Board of Directors, is to increase the assessment rate from 4% to 6%, and that's to ensure that tourism promotion funding remains competitive. The proposed increase would help maintain Huntington Beach's market visibility and competitiveness with neighboring cities who are welcoming new tourism enhancements, as you can see here. So if the modification is approved, assessments collected would increase from approximately $7 to $10 million, with the majority of funding allocated towards sales and marketing and 10% dedicated to tourism enhancement programs. So here are the proportional budget allocations, which shall remain the same throughout the remainder of the T-Bid term. So in accordance with state law, the schedule here provides the framework for the modification process. In response to VHB's requests, council adopted a resolution of intention on April 16. Following that, the Following that, the city clerk provided the required mail and newspaper noticing. A public meeting then took place on May 7th to gather input, and for tonight's public hearing, if a majority protest is not received, then council may modify the T-Bid by adopting a resolution of modification. If a modification is approved, staff recommends an amendment to the management agreement that includes responsibilities and funding commitments by both VHB and the city for implementing special tourism enhancement programs, such as the ones identified on the list you see here. VHB's commitment would equate to about 10% of the assessment budget, with the city reciprocating this commitment to enhance the visitor and resident experience. So, proposed initiatives encompass a spectrum of enhancements, as shown here and as outlined on Exhibit C of the amendment. For tonight's public hearing, any lodging business owner subject to this assessment may protest. Protest must be filed with the city clerk before or during the public hearing. If written protests are received from owners representing 50% or more of the estimated annual assessments to be levied, then the T-Bid should not be modified. Thus far, we have received one protest totaling less than 1% of the total assessment value. Therefore, staff recommends that council conduct the public hearing. If protests totaling 50% or more are not received, then adopt Resolution 2024-30, modifying the T-Bid, and authorize the city manager to approve and execute the Second Amendment to the T-Bid Management Agreement. Thank you. That concludes my presentation. City staff, as well as Kelly Miller, CEO and President, and VHB staff are available for any questions.
Okay. Now, I'd like to open the public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, we do. We have three signed up to speak. I'll call your name. Kelly Miller, Peter Townen, and Tony Duran, and I'd also like to come on down, report that we did receive a letter from John Villa, Executive Director, Huntington Beach Wetlands Conservancy, regarding proposed adoption of Resolution 24-30, modifying the management district plan for the Huntington Beach Tourism Business Improvement District.
Individuals wishing to provide a comment on this item scheduled for public hearing may do so by filling out a request-to-speak form delivered to the city clerk. All speakers are encouraged, but not required, to identify themselves by name. Each speaker may have up to three minutes unless a volume of speakers warrants reducing the time allowance. First speaker, go ahead.
You're probably tired of seeing me up here. Peter P.T. Townend, 45-year resident of Huntington Beach. Good evening, Mayor Gracie, City Council, Chief Parra, and Michael Gates. Today, I was in a meeting about the state of California beaches presented by the Surf Rider Foundation, and I don't think too many people know that half the coastal cities of California have lost their beaches, and they ain't coming back, which kind of puts us in an interesting position because our beaches are healthier than ever. I mean, our eight miles of beaches probably is the greatest example of beach in any community currently in the state of California. So, that's why I think it's pretty important that we get the T-Bid approved, so we can tell everybody in the world that we got plenty of beaches, come to Surf City if you need to go to the beach. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members, Chief Parra and Michael Gates. I'm Tony Duran, the resident business owner, Executive Vice President of H.B. Downtown. I'm here to support item 18, the modification of the T-Bid. I think it is good for our city, it's going to keep us competitive. I spent a lot of time traveling the United States and visited many destination resorts, and I think there's a lot we can learn from those that are doing well. There is a city that's number one in America in terms of summer tourism. They're also number one in growth for three years in a row, and that's Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, and I think one of the keys to that particular ranking is the fact that they have more than speeding vehicles that are making a lot of noise in their downtown area. They have micro mobility, they have quiet vehicles, low-speed, safe vehicles, family-oriented, self-guiding-type tours, app-driven tours, family-friendly environment, and I think frankly, that's where we can improve as a city, where much more than just a place to hang out at the beach and party. I think there's a lot more the city can bring to the table, and I think as far as best practices, Myrtle Beach is a good place to look. You know, in terms of micro mobility, I'm working currently with a company that wants to move here to Huntington Beach, set up their worldwide headquarters in Huntington Beach. They have low-speed electric vehicles, they were designed in the Silicon Valley. We have found the perfect spot for it on the corner of First and Walnut, right behind Dairy Queen. There's an empty lot that's an eyesore in the city. I spoke to Public Works, they don't, they can't use the spot. For the last several years, I've been trying to get the attention of the city that we can develop that spot and to make it a very useful place to join downtown in Pacific City, and just need a RFP to help, so thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Stephanie Webb, longtime Huntington Beach resident, so I also want to support 18.24-406, and I love what he said about a family-friendly tourist destination. It seems that some people on the City Council have completely lost sight that this is a tourist town, that we rely on tourist money to fund the projects that we need to do, okay? Where I got cut off the last time I was speaking is the number 21 is not a family-friendly resolution. Families do not bring their kids to a place that, to see guns, okay? The police are not safer, the police don't want more people with guns, if I'm correct. You guys don't want AR-15s walking around Huntington Beach, do you? This is what we're trying to do, is we're an autism-friendly city. That brings people here. Are you not going to look at me still? Okay, so the idea is for people from Huntington Beach, like my sister Laura, Huntington Beach graduate from Huntington Beach High School, and a city that was home to the shooter of the biggest mass shooting in Orange County history, that again, killed the eight people that are on my shirt, including my sister, also shot my mom. My sister has a sister that, another sister that lives here in Alley Webb, a brother that lives here, Billy Webb, sisters, nieces and nephews, Huntington Beach residents. This does not attract tourist people to say that we're a Second Amendment. Obviously, we are. My husband and I are gun owners. Nobody's trying to take all your guns away. What we want is sensible gun laws, and we want a place where people feel safe, including people, as I said, that literally talked to me from Europe that say, "We don't go there," and two different sets of people that say, "We don't go there because we don't feel safe with your gun problem." So, I know that Ms. Blankhead's over there laughing, but it's really not funny when you guys are taking away our tourist money to do this stuff. They don't want you attacking our libraries. They don't want, what they want you to do is things like tours, not wasting our money on lawsuits, giving away our tax money that the people are here, that the tax dollars are coming in to do programs like the Intake Center, which is amazing. Thank you, ladies, for wearing orange today, because it is Gun Violence Awareness Month in memory of the people that gave up their lives, so that you can have unfettered access to guns. We don't want to take away your guns. We'd like laws to protect the rest of us, and please do things to encourage tourism not to distract from them.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council members. I'm Kelly Miller, President and CEO of Visit Huntington Beach, and I forgot my glasses tonight, so I'll be short, and Chris did a great job on her reports and Steve's, so they covered most of what I'm going to say. I'm here tonight representing the VHB Board of Directors to speak in favor of item number 18, to modify the Tourism Business Improvement District T-Bid. We're a 33-year-old nonprofit organization. We've represented the city's vital tourism industry for all those years. We help bring millions of annual visitors to Surf City, USA, and their important dollars to our city. This is the third time we've appeared before you about this modification. The last two times, it was 7-0 vote. There were numerous speakers in the past times we were before you in letters, as well as tonight. We hope that again tonight, there'll be a 7-0 vote, and this hard work doesn't happen overnight. For about over a year now, we've worked hard with our board and staff, and certainly with the city staff, chief under his direction, city council members, to come to where we are tonight, the final public hearing to approve this modification. And to recap, we're looking at increasing the T-Bid assessment from 4% to 6% on overnight lodging businesses that they place on themselves this assessment. This modification simply adjusts the self-assessment rate from 4% to 6%. Again, it's been said, this is not a sales tax, nor a property tax. It is a 10%, 100% paid for by overnight lodging assessments, properties. It's used, and will continue to be used, to market, sell, and put out public relation around the world about Surf City, USA, and it doesn't cost our residents a dime. It's also going to be used for, to fund these very important tourism enhancement projects and programs that we've identified with the chief and staff, and those were in your Agenda Packet, and Chris covered some of those tonight. It's big business. It's a half a billion dollars in direct economic impact a year, and the jobs are about 5,000 direct jobs that we support annually. And because these visitors choose Huntington Beach over many other places, this means that our local businesses can stay open, just not during the busy summer times, but also during those year-round times when we really need business and we need employment This modification will certainly ensure that we continue to generate revenue, occupancy tax, parking revenue, sales tax, and certainly jobs in this tough economic time. We know we have to compete. You've seen sort of the comp set, we've talked to you individually. It's a competitive landscape out there. I mentioned last time, $1.9 billion approved by the Anaheim City Council. You just saw Pelican Hill rebranding, that's a $100 million investment. It's going to be a St. Regis, and all those things matter when people decide where they're going to stay. I'd like to personally thank, on behalf of the Board, Mayor, Protem, and all the other City Council members, staff, and Chief Parra, for all this process that we've been going through. It's taken about a year, and I'd also like to thank my wonderful staff at VHB, they're right behind over here, they're excited about this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any more speakers?
That concludes public testimony for this item.
Seeing there are no other speakers, we will not close the public hearing. The city clerk will report on the tabulation of protests received. A majority of protests, if a majority of protests exists, from the owners or authorized representatives of the business in the district, that will pay 50% more of the assessments proposed to be levied. Do we have, have there been any protests?
Yes, Mayor, we received one protest totaling less than 1% of the total assessment value. Therefore, the city clerk's office has determined that a majority protest has not been received from owners or authorized representatives of businesses in the district that will pay 50% or more of the assessments proposed to be levied.
Thank you. Does Council have any questions? First, staff or Visit HB?
I just want to say that I want to thank Kelly Miller and his team and his leadership for what they do for Visit HB, promoting Surf City around the world. I want to thank all of them for all their hard work, our staff. This has been a little bit longer than I wanted it to, but we've heard this for many times. This will help grow our economy here in Huntington Beach, and I'm honored to move to adopt Resolution number 24-30 and approve the authorization of the city manager to execute the Second Amendment to the Tourism Business Improvement District Management Agreement between the City of Huntington Beach and Visit HB, and this will do wonders for the growth of our economy here in Huntington Beach, and I'm proud to move that item.
Second.
Mayor.
Councilmember McKean.
Kelly, do you mind coming up for a second? Yes, I don't have a problem with businesses self-assessing themselves, but for me, a big requirement of this was the physical enhancement and improvements to the downtown and kind of Pier Plaza area. I know Chris touched on it, Kelly, but I think it's really fascinating for the residents to understand the kind of improvements that are going to be made. Do you mind just kind of listing off some of the big ones that are committed, you know, improvements made in that area coming up?
Sure. Two things, really, that you'll notice right away is the temporary restrooms downtown next to Zax.
Right.
That's a big one, right? The Ambassador Program. At nighttime, we know, on the weekends, it gets, can be a little dicey sometimes, so we continue to fund that with the downtown bid. Third thing, Councilmember, is the connectivity between Pacific City, the hotels downtown and Main Street, or excuse me, Fifth Street. We want to enhance those sort of things. The other thing that we're looking to do is to complete our wayfinding project, because some of that stuff is still kind of in the back sort of 40, so to speak, and one of those things will be to put the sign that we've talked about for a number of years over the pier that will say, "Welcome to Huntington Beach Surf City, USA."
But kind of to touch on that, the, we're going back to the old school, you know, early Huntington Beach days, that huge iconic sign, if you guys know what I'm talking about.
Right.
It's going to be over the entrance to the pier, so it's going to be really like a nod to our history, which is amazing, and then I know we've talked about future projects. I know there's an issue with not having, you know, conduit down there, electricity, dry utilities, et cetera, so is that planned as well to hopefully, in the future, right, dedicate some resources to putting in electricity down near the boardwalk and help with some events?
Great question. We've worked with city staff, we want to do an assessment. We have money in there, I think it's about 50K this year, to say, "What is it we need?" So, we'll work with the utility companies, we'll work with people to do big special events, we'll work with all the meeting planners to really assess, what is it that they need to put more business down there?
Awesome. Thank you so much. Yeah, that's great work. This is obviously a huge benefit to the city, not only for tourism, but also the physical enhancements we're going to be bringing to the community. It's going to be amazing, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. So, we've had a motion. Who seconded it?
Burns. He seconded.
Okay.
Okay, we ready to vote?
Yep.
Okay, Councilmember Moser.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Vandermark.
Yes.
Strickland.
Aye.
McKean.
Yes.
Kelmick.
Aye.
Item passes 7-0.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number 19, 24-420, consider adopting Resolution number 24-29. Staff, please introduce your report.
I'm ready. I apologize.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. This evening, for your consideration, we have the fiscal year 2425 proposed budget for adoption, as well as related actions. So, we'll be going over the general fund budget, as well as proposed revenue adjustments, and then... and then overview of the budget approval and related actions being requested for consideration this evening. So as previously mentioned, during the May 21st study session, the proposed 2425 general fund budget is structurally balanced with a projected $1.7 million surplus. So one thing to note is that the surplus figure has been updated from the May 21st study session, which was previously $132,000. So this number was updated to include proposed master fee and charges as revenues, as well as emergency medical fee revenues increases totaling $1.9 million. Additionally, we also have proposed expenditure increases to key positions within the city attorney's office to assist with attraction and retention of talent, and also to fill critical vacancies within the department. So one thing also to note in here, as previously mentioned, this also, the budget also includes one-time revenues of $6.9 million from the waterfront settlement judgment, of which 25% is transferred to the Section 115 Trust to deal with future unfunded pension liabilities. 23% would be transferred to the Equipment Replacement Fund. 15% would be transferred to the Workers' Compensation Fund, and 37% would be transferred to the General Liability Fund. So here's an overview of the proposed revenues with the updated 301.7 million dollar figure. This number has been revised from the previously reported number of $299.8 million. One other thing just to note from the previous presentation is that this pie chart has been updated to also include dollar amounts as well as percentages. So within the general fund proposed revenues, as previously mentioned, our major revenue variances also include property tax. So we do have higher assessed valuations from previous fiscal year. So we do have a $3.8 million increase, or 3.8%. And then we do also have an $8.8 million in revenue from other agencies, which represents a $6.1 million increase from previous year, and then from prior year. And then that's primarily from the VRRP program, or also known as the CalOptima program. Additionally, we also have non-operating revenues of $7.5 million, which, as previously mentioned, is primarily from the $6.9 million, which represents the first repayment related to the waterfront loan Superior Court judgment. So this represent, this chart represents the general fund proposed expenditures of 300 million. So the pie chart to the left by category shows the, is updated to include both dollar amounts as well as percentages. And then the department, the pie chart by department just has percentages. However, the following slide does include a detailed historical chart by department, which has the full breakdown for each department from 2021 all the way to 2425 proposed. So within this, so within the proposed expenditures, the major expenditure variances do include, within personnel, do include increases to PERS normal costs, as well as to the PERS UAL, just due to the negative 7.5% return from CalPERS in fiscal year 2223, 2122, as well as just continuing impacts from the 2324 MOU, as well as the addition of four FTEs. One thing we'd also just like to note is that we did have a reduction of 2.6% or almost $1.6 million decrease in operating costs, just due to a citywide effort from all departments to realign costs and to be able to just preserve funding for contractual increases, as well as just kind of costs related to inflation, so that we could just preserve costs related to essential services for the public. So within the 2425 budget, we included four new positions. Additionally, we, within the city attorney's office, were also proposing an upgrade of one position. It's a deputy, an upgrade of a deputy community prosecutor position to a senior deputy community prosecutor in order to lead the city's prosecutorial efforts for complex misdemeanor cases. Additionally, within the community development department, we have one building inspection supervisor within the fire department, one limited-term management aide, which would be funded solely through opioid funding, one real-time crime center supervisor within the police department, one fleet maintenance crew leader in the public works department, one senior mechanic within the police department, and then a, and then a public, one public works position restructuring, which includes the elimination of a city engineer position to be combined with a deputy public works director position for a combined deputy public works director slash city engineer position, and then an upgrade of a vacant capital projects administrator position to capital project supervisor position. So next, we do have a chart of, which shows the FTEs from fiscal year 1415 through 2425. Next, we have our proposed revenue adjustments for the upcoming fiscal year. So first, we have our emergency medical services cost recovery fee adjustment. So one thing to note is that the city's EMS fees were last updated in 2021, and based on a third-party assessment coordinated by the fire department, our 2425 proposed judge, proposed budget contemplates an adjustment to EMS fees to full cost recovery, and also includes two new fees. These fees are standby charges, which captures the time spent by fire department staff at the hospital, waiting just per the hospital's request before the ambulance can be put back into service, and then also a fee that's known as facility lift assist, which is also a non-transport fee. And this fee is for specific medical care facilities or residential nursing home or assisted care facilities to conduct lift assists or other basic assessments of residents who do not require emergency transport to a local emergency department. So if these EMS fees are approved, then it would bring an additional approximately $1.6 million in new general fund revenue on an annual basis. Next, on the master fee and charges schedule. So just as a kind of a quick background, the city maintains a master fee and charges schedule, which identifies master fees and charges for various city services. The fees are reviewed and updated periodically. We last completed a comprehensive fee study in 2016 based on fiscal year 1415 budget and financial data. The proposed 2425 budget, the proposed master fee and charges schedule that we just completed incorporates a full cost fee study based on the fiscal year 2324 budget data, and then also includes strategic adjustments to certain fees. Just one thing to note with the fee study, with the fee schedule, is that this would really help to ensure that fees are really being paid by the actual users of the fees. And so then, general revenues, such as property tax and sales tax, are used to fund services that provide community-wide benefits, such as public works, public safety, as well as park maintenance. So if the fees are adopted as proposed, then the updated schedule is expected to generate up to one, close to 1.3 million in annual additional revenue, close to a little over $900,000, of which would be general fund revenue. So within these, so within the adjustments, there's, the city treasurer's department is proposing an increase to the credit card transaction fee from 2.29% to 3% to basically bring the credit card transaction fee closer to full cost recovery. If approved, the projected decrease in subsidy would be 70, close to $74,000 in general fund, and then $94,000 in other funds. So the other funds would be more for municipal billing costs. And then within the city manager's department, there's a restructuring of film permit fees to align with other cities. So it includes just a restructuring, a restructured application fee, introduction of peak season filming fees, standardized fee schedule for staff time, addition of equipment fees for public, for public works equipment and marine safety equipment, as well as a 15% coordination fee. Additionally, we're proposing to add civic center room rental fees for the council chambers B7 and B8, just kind of due to repeated requests for room, for use of these rooms. If approved, the projected decrease in subsidy for film permit fees would be a little over $33,000 in other funds. Within the community development department, we're pleased to present a new expedited plan review fee, and this would be offered at two times the regular plan review rate and reduce the building plan review turnaround time by 50%. And the projected decrease in subsidy is, will be evaluated in the upcoming fiscal year, if approved, as this fee is expected to be demand-based. Additionally, within the strand parking structure, we're also proposing parking rate adjustments to align with other similar mixed-use facilities and comparable parking programs within Orange County. We'd also extend the peak pricing months from May to September to April to October, just to align with the higher demand periods. If approved, then the projected decrease in the subsidy would be almost $101,000 in general fund, and then the same amount in other funds. Within the community and library services department, there's a new specific events, ticketed event fee that's being proposed. So event organizers seeking permits for ticketed events would be required to pay a per ticketed, a per-ticket fee for all ticketed events based on the face value of the ticket. So for tickets valued between $0 to $50, the ticket fee would be, the ticket or gate fee would be $2, 51 to 200, it would be $4. And then tickets over, priced at over $200, the ticket or gate fee would be $6. The projected increase in revenue is conservatively expected to be $200,000 for the general fund in year one, or fiscal year 2425, if approved. And then additionally, we're also proposing to add a tournament and special events parking charge in the sports complex, and that would be to increase the daily parking rate on tournament and special event days from $2 to $10. So one thing to note is that 40% of the revenue generated from this fee would be placed in a dedicated fund specifically for sports complex capital improvements. If approved, and the projected increase in revenue would be $267,000 for the general fund, and then $178,000 in the dedicated sports complex capital project fund. And then additionally, within the community and library services department, room rental hourly increases of $15 per hour at the following facilities are also proposed. Senior center at Central Park, the various clubhouses, community center rooms, central library theater rental, as well as the CND rooms in the central library. The rates were last adjusted at the end of 2018, and the projected increase in revenue would be close to $116,000 in the general fund. And then additionally, in the, additionally, within the community and library services department, we're also proposing to adjust the field rental hourly rates, as well as adding two new categories. So the field hourly rates would increase by $7 per hour in each category. And then one thing just to note is that we would still remain competitive compared to other agencies. So we do have two comparable agencies listed below at the bottom of the chart. So we have Newport Beach, as well as Irvine, listed below. So you could see for Newport, for example, they have $77 per hour for the resident nonprofit groups, and so we are still well below, so we're still well below that. If approved, the projected increase in revenue would be $21,000 for the general fund. Within the police department, there are new fees proposed for records, as well for records and media requests. Currently, the city does not charge for reports and media records requests. However, in surveying other cities, we did note that a number of other agencies within Orange County do charge for these records. So we do have a survey of the other agencies listed here. So we are proposing to charge $5 per report, and then $25 for each media type. So just in reviewing the chart, you could see that we would still remain well within the median of Orange County cities. So if approved, then the projected decrease in subsidy would be $50,000 to the general fund. So within the fire department, there's various proposed adjustments based on just the updated review of cost of service done by, during the fee study for community risk reduction, central net training center, plan review, and then other program fees. Additionally, there's new fees, such as copies and instructor wages, as recommended in the central net training center category. And then if approved, the projected decrease in the subsidy would be a little over $10,000 in the general fund, and then close to $2,600 in the central net fund. Additionally, in public works, adjustments are proposed based on a review of actual costs. One thing just to note is that a majority of fees are deposit-based, and any unused fees would be returned to the applicant. So if approved, the projected decrease in subsidy would be $37,000 to the general fund. And then lastly, we're also recommending that council also prove an annual inflationary adjustment for the master fee and charges schedule as well. City council would authorize the city manager or designate to make annual inflationary adjustments based on the prior year annual percentage change, based on the all-urban CPI index for the LA, Long Beach, Anaheim area, but it would be capped at 5% per year. This practice has become exceedingly common in California since the Great Recession, and a number of other cities have adopted this. So other Orange County cities that have, some of the other Orange County cities that have adopted this method include Newport Beach, Costa Mesa, Seal Beach, as well as Lake Forest. So then here, we just have a brief summary of each of the charges, of each of the proposed fees and charges by department. And then you can see within the kind of bold, underlined section, kind of towards the bottom third, there's the total estimated general fund revenue impact, which is $908,000. And then a little below that, at the very bottom, there's the total estimated all funds revenue impact of close to $1.3 million. So then next, we have the general fund long-term financial plan that's been updated since the May 21st study session, which includes both the updated revenues and expenditures that were previously mentioned at the beginning of this presentation. So you can see, there's the proposed 2425 with the updated $1.7 million surplus figure. And then you can see in the out years, the surplus figure has been reduced for 2526 from $9 million down to 7.4. And then all the way down, and then all the way out to 2728, where the surplus has been reduced to 15 million. One thing to note is that should the master fee and charges, as well as the EMS fee charges not be approved, then this is what the long-term financial plan would look like. So then the 2425 proposed budget would have a deficit of $851,000, or alternatively, we would Or alternatively, we would have to look for additional reductions within departments or we'd have to utilize reserves. Additionally, within '25, '26, there would be a deficit of $10.5 million. And then the deficit in '27, '28 would increase to $18.5 million. So with that, city council approval is requested for a number of actions, including the adoption of the budget as well as approval of the master fee and charges schedule and the EMS fee schedule, as well as approval of the various positions and all of the related budgetary actions. And with that, that concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. I believe Councilmember McKeon had a question.
Yeah, thank you, Sunny. Sabrina, this is a ton of work, I know, and it's your biggest presentation of the year. So I know you guys work around the clock and we really appreciate it. Do you mind going to slide six? I just want to kind of go through some slides and highlight some things for the residents because they'll have questions about more information and transparency, et cetera.
Absolutely.
So slide six, I just want to point out that our property tax revenues continue to increase, which is our largest revenue source. And this is due to higher assessed values, many of which are from sales transactions. So that's a huge positive. Revenues from the other agencies. Chief Haverley, can you kind of touch on this? Just briefly, what CAL OPTIMA is and how that works?
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember. So CAL OPTIMA is, it's a funding mechanism that helps us improve reimbursement through Medicare and ambulance transport. And in essence, the team last year, the CFO and her office, Division Chief Lopez and Bonito from our office, worked together to apply for CAL OPTIMA. And in essence, what it does is it takes the minimum rate that they reimburse us for ambulance and it allows us to recover our cost. So that started last year at an increase of $3.5 million just for the one program. And then our inner, the other program you see up there is another million and a half. So I think teams work through that and that we expect that to continue moving year over year.
Awesome. Last paragraph, the non-operating revenues. Christopher, I think you're still up in the audience, had a question about the waterfront loan. So that's the lawsuit that City Attorney Michael Gates brought back in, which is roughly $32 million plus. I know people often have come up here to rail against the attorney's office, but with that $32 million, that's, you know, quite of a phenomenal return on our investment. So Chris, I think you're still up there. You had a question about that waterfront loan. So that's listed in the budget.
Councilmember McKeon, it's $38 million.
Oh, my mistake, $38 million, thank you. Sunny, slide nine, please. So on this one, just want to really point out that for efficiencies, we actually reduced or decreased our operating costs by 2.6%. So that's a $1.56 million decrease, which is not a small insignificant amount. So that's a lot of hard work to come up with those efficiencies. Sunny, slide 10, please. This was brought up a lot in some of these new positions. But I just want to point out how many of these new positions are actually cost-neutral. Attorney's office, we desperately need prosecutors to help with public safety and quality of life issues. The community development position, that's, you know, we need inspectors badly. So we need a supervisor to kind of streamline that, get our permitting faster. The fire department position is funded through the OPAID fund. That's no burden on the HB taxpayers. And then with the police department, the real-time crime center will hopefully reduce crime, shoplifting, et cetera, with all our retail theft. So that'll, you know, hopefully bring in more sales tax dollars. And then, the public works department, you know, basically combining that senior maintenance mechanic and the fleet maintenance crew leader because we desperately need more mechanics on-site and in-house because we have so many old vehicles. So it's actually, we can't actually get the parts. So it's amazing going down the public works yard to see how our mechanics work and actually machine parts themselves. So that's really going to help with efficiencies and repairs for the city. Slide 14, please. Touched on earlier, just the emergency medical systems full cost recovery that Haverley touched on. So that's another $1,006, which is great. Slide 17, the next one. For me and my business, the expedited plan check review fee, that's huge, especially if people want to come in and get their permits faster. Many jurisdictions in my private sector life don't have this option. That's going to be a great resource for people that want to get their permits faster. So I know the demand for that's going to be high. Slide 18, you touched on it. These are the gate fees for ticketed events, which can help offset public safety costs and bring in additional revenue to the city. Below the sports complex, so that's special event parking and the city's going to receive 40% of that additional revenue that will go towards specifically capital improvement projects at the sports complex, which is huge. Slide 22. And so on this one, you mentioned on it, the master fee schedule is going to be pegged to the Consumer Price Index, not to exceed 5% per year. And I was talking with the mayor about this and we discussed this. We wanted to see if we could carve out all senior residents from these CPI adjustments and then handle any proposed senior fee adjustments on an as-needed basis. Is that possible?
I think we could amend the resolution.
Okay. I'd be in favor of that. And this will obviously help give our seniors some financial relief. And then, lastly, on slides 24 and 25. So through all this hard work, we created efficiencies, which turned a deficit into a surplus and slashed future deficits by over 35% from the proposed budget that was presented at the last meeting. And if you recall, last year, we did the same thing. Created surpluses slash future year deficits by 60%. So it's a continual effort. We set the city on a strong financial path. Still have a lot of work to do, I get it. But we have more runway now to bring in more revenue opportunities as well as create further efficiencies. So we talk about it daily. It's a lot of hard work going into it and I'm really proud of the success we've had so far. So thank you, guys.
Any other council members have questions, comments?
Before, we have to do the public hearing too. But questions and then the public hearing.
It was backwards on the paperwork. Okay. So we'll open a public hearing. Well, that's what I was asking. At least I have questions. Councilmember Bolton.
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to preface the discussion of the budget with something that's going to sound like it's not relevant, but it was a really strange discussion. So at our last meeting after the closed session, it was suggested that some employees might feel fearful for their jobs because of city council critique of their departments. And I just want to say that from my perspective, at least, for employees, just because we critique the department and its performance doesn't mean that, you know, city employees should be in fear for their jobs. So, you know, again, not sure where that came from. But, you know, we, department heads are the ones who are accountable for performance. And so that's who we talk to and that's who we ask questions. You know, when we want to critique the performance of the various departments. So I hope that, you know, that puts people's minds at ease. On a macro level, I have to say that I do have some discomfort with all of the fee increases that we're talking about on the master fee schedule because we still have big pieces of revenue that we need to figure out, you know, where is this going to come from? So kind of philosophically, again, I'm troubled by us increasing fees on the stuff that the residents kind of use on a regular basis, like parking and, you know, things at the library and things like that, when we have two proposals that could bring in a significant amount of revenue that have just kind of been sitting for 18 months. So one of them is allowing short-term rentals in the coastal zone, unhosted, which based on an estimate, I can't remember if the staff produced an estimate, but based on an estimate that I saw from, you know, I guess the association of some short-term rental owners in the city would produce $1 million or more, substantial amount of revenue for the city. And then the other one was cannabis. So regardless of how we felt about either of those two proposals, substantively, the fact that we haven't brought those into the conversation at this point and we're kind of talking about, you know, raising fees here and raising fees there feels piecemeal to me. And I think that even though, you know, yeah, staff work very hard, and don't get me wrong, I think you, I really appreciate all of the work that you all have done. Looking at a $7.5 million deficit in the next fiscal year is significant. And I would rather have brought residents some more holistic discussion of how we are going to fix this. So, you know, those are my comments on the budget. Thank you.
Mayor, can I interrupt real quick?
Yes.
I think there's been a bit of confusion and stuff. There seems to be some opinions being shared. And I think this portion of the meeting was for questions related to the presented material.
Yes.
And then perhaps the commentary could take place after the public hearing.
Okay. Transfer that to after.
Okay.
Thanks. Does anybody else have questions related to the presentation? Yep, okay. We will now open the public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, we do. We have three signed up to speak. So we can go ahead and open it. And I'll call down Kathy Ryder, Libby, and Ellen Riley, if she's still here, because I believe she made comments during the public comments portion of the meeting too. Yeah, it looks like Ms. Riley's already left.
Individuals wishing to provide comments on this item scheduled for a public hearing may do so by filling out a request to speak form delivered to the city clerk. All speakers are encouraged but not required to identify themselves by name. Each speaker may have up to three minutes unless the volume of speakers warrants reducing the time allowance. So go ahead.
Kathy Ryder, good evening. Huntington Beach voter and homeowner for 39 years. Once again, I'm concerned because we keep being told that all of the lawsuits that either filed by our city attorney or defended by our city attorney are at no cost of the city. However, when I look at the budget, I see that the city attorney gets a salary, pretty substantial one, along with some health benefits, some retirement benefits. I also look at the budget and see that there's a pretty robust clerical support staff for the city attorney's office. We also show that we have multiple attorneys as full-time staff and we are even going to add an additional FTE. We also use outside counsel for certain legal issues. So it looks as if, well, there is a cost to both file and defend any lawsuits and it's wrapped into our budget. So there is a cost to the taxpayers for all this litigation. And in this proposed budget, there's another almost 14% increase on top of the 31% budget increase last year to the city attorney's office. And since 2021, there's been a total 61% increase for just this one office. And I don't understand why we have to, this one particular office continues to grow. Last year, we were told that all departments were expected to tighten their belts and make some budget cuts. So if that is the case, why do we see that coming from the city attorney's department? Are they exempt somehow? Or is there some magic that the rest of us don't know? But if you ask everyone to tighten their belts, that should truly be everyone. So again, as a taxpayer, I'm concerned that we continue to see this ramp-up now year after year after year. And to me, a 61% budget increase from 2021 till now seems a little obsessive.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Once again, happy Pride Month. After watching that presentation, I really appreciate all the effort you went into to find all the places you could get a few dollars here, a few dollars there. But I do want to point out the demographics at Huntington Beach are not the same demographics as Newport Beach. So comparing how much you're going to charge your residents for every little nickel and dime thing in the city should not be compared to what a resident in Newport Beach should be a reasonable comparison. The average home cost there is nothing like the average home cost for residents here. The average income is nothing, is not the same. So I don't think it's really a fair comparison. And so burdening local residents with every nickel and dime fee. If they're a victim of a crime, then they have to pay to get the police report and all of the sub-things that they need with that? That doesn't seem right. But what I prepared to say is we regularly hear from Mayor Vandermark and tell the media and the public that the legal actions the city takes are free because HB has a city attorney. She conveniently overlooks the bloated cost of his department. Last year, this council majority approved a whopping 30% increase to the city attorney budget, almost $1 million. This year, the proposal is to increase the city attorney's office budget by almost another half a million dollars, or 13%. So if approved, the budget for that single office will have increased by 50% over two years. One would expect with these huge expenses in the city attorney's office, mostly for salaries for permanent employees, we would see a similar reduction in hiring of outside counsel. But this is not the case. One would also expect to see a huge win rate when spending so much for attorneys. Instead, we've seen losses that cost the city millions and undisclosed settlements up to friends. If you were hiring outside counsel and the performance was as dismal as we've seen of late, we would fire that firm and hire another. Since the city is stuck with this firm, I think it's only reasonable for the public to have a clear understanding of why this in-house office is so expensive with costs increasing at such an exponential rate. Please explain. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Council. My name is Perry Clitherow. I wanted to piggyback off what Rhonda was saying. I thought it was really insightful. I think it sounds like staff worked really hard to try to find revenue enhancements wherever they could. But the fact of the matter is, looking at this spreadsheet here, is it's not going to make up the gap, which we don't have a money printer like the federal government does. So unfortunately, that does mean we're going to have to either cut services, raise taxes. We're going to have to do one or the other. So we do have the third option, which I mentioned earlier, which is, of course, letting the free market build housing or the compromise, as you guys can decide where we'll build 13,000 to 15,000 new units that frees up money from the lawsuits. That's going to help our economy in a lot of different ways, bring workers closer to downtown, bring workers here for our businesses, bring more consumers in for our businesses, all the things I mentioned earlier. I did want to ask, this is just a principled thing. I'm not sure why we subsidize credit card transactions. And now I'm wondering if lots of businesses are doing this too and I kind of feel bad. I love my credit card points. But I don't know if we should be subsidizing credit card points. And I don't know, I guess, I didn't realize we were that entitled in this country as credit card users. Maybe we are. Just that, I thought that was interesting. And then I did have a question, and I'm not sure if I can like ask staff or something. But when we make these projections on these fee increases and revenue enhancements based on fees, are we taking into account the fact that people aren't going to use these services as often if we raise the fee? If we increase the price of a ticket by $2, $4, $6, people aren't going to buy as many tickets. If we raise the price of parking from $2 to $10, people aren't going to park as often in those places. And when we make these projections, are we? Obviously, it's impossible to predict the future and be accurate there, but are we at least trying to estimate that?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Bethany Webb again. So a couple of things that were already mentioned. Our city attorney getting a 50% more to continually lose cases. But something else that I thought was super interesting that I read on social media about the lawsuit. First, our esteemed attorney was saying that the reason that he wasn't releasing it was because of the oil spill lawsuit, which doesn't exist. Which in court, in Gina's case, your attorney was shamed because the judge literally asked, does that lawsuit exist? And it doesn't. So I think, and I don't know if you guys know this, So I think, and I don't know if you guys know this, but do you know who alone decided the, to pay out that payout to Code Four? According to Mr. Gates on social media, he alone decided to make that payout. So I thought that you were, that the city council was the client, and he was supposed to give advice, that he wasn't actually making decisions. But his exact words, and I have a copy of it if you want to disagree with me, you wrote exactly, "I alone decided." Now, I'm going to go back to something that somebody just brought up that I really like, though, marijuana. So I don't see any reason why I have to drive to Costa Mesa, or people have to drive to Costa Mesa, to buy marijuana. Because, so it's legal. We have bars everywhere on every corner, which is worse for drivers, worse for your health. You can buy cigarettes at the stores and at liquor stores. Marijuana is not as bad for you and is a big moneymaker. Costa Mesa just allowed two more stores because they're raking in money. So if you're going to spend all of our money giving it towards ridiculous lawsuits, I want to go to public housing since our esteemed Tony Strickland moved here into affordable housing but doesn't want anybody else to have it. Tony baloney, I think that's baloney. I think that we should really look at the revenue, because what we know is that one house that's worth $5 million spends much less than 10 houses that are worth $500,000. Those people do all their shopping here, and all that money actually brings in revenue. So the affordable housing is great for the budget. The city attorney is not, and marijuana is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Well, my name is Kenny Nowey. I'd like to point out and emphasize my prior comment. In my prior discussion, I mentioned that on page 27 of the financial package, there is proposed all funds deficit of almost $11 million. Apparently, the discussion today is going to be limited to the general fund. I just wanted to alert the public and remind the city council that there's an almost $11 million deficit showing on page 27. In no way am I suggesting that staff is not doing their job. I just wanted to point this out. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it?
Yeah, we have no one else signed up to speak, and I'd just like to say for the record, we received some supplemental communications on this item. A PowerPoint from Sunny Hahn, our chief financial officer, titled "City of Huntington Beach Proposed Fiscal Year 24-25 Budget Adoption." A letter from Carlos Rubio, president of the Huntington Beach Municipal Teamsters, regarding the proposed budget for fiscal year 24-25, and two email communications received on this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more public speakers, we will not close the public hearing. Do we have a motion and a second to vote?
I have some more questions.
More questions?
Yeah. I just wanted, I usually like to wait for public comment, just to see if there's any additional questions they have. Do I have the floor?
Sure.
Thank you. All right, so I'd gotten an email and saw a couple of questions about the professional services and the city manager's budget on page 116 of the budget. Sunny, could you talk a little bit about the professional services increase from 23, 24, up to $2 million, and revised budget, and then back down to 475? What accounted for that nearly $1.5 million increase in professional services?
Yes, I can. So within there, it primarily includes a $800,000 cleanup from PEG fees, which are public education and governmental fund fees. So we have a cleanup that we will be doing this fiscal year for basically ineligible costs that will be transferred from the PEG fund into the general fund. And then we also have additional one-time contracts that were carried over from the prior fiscal year into the current fiscal year.
So that's a lot of the, a lot of the weirdities are usually contract carriers. So I think this is like, that's the answer I've gotten to, I think, three or four other questions that I've had over the last couple of weeks, which is it's carryover.
Correct.
So the PEG fees, so we have ineligible money that we used with PEG dollars and that are being reimbursed by the general fund?
Yes.
For that? Okay. I just wanted to be clear on that. Okay. Thank you for that answer. And where would that be, where would that show up in the budget? Like, where would you see, like, the PEG funds, general fund transfer into PEG funds somewhere in the budget? Is it deep in some?
The actual PEG funds themselves?
Yeah, I mean, but where would we see that? Like, so you could track that $1.4 million, or, no, sorry, $800,000 transfer, so that generates that number? Where's, is that in the budget here, or is that on a deeper document that we don't?
So when we do the actual cleanup, we'll actually bring it forward to council for approval.
Okay. So it was in, you just included it in the revised budget because you knew it was coming?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Correct.
Got it. So with regard to the fees, switching gears, I do also have a little bit of heartburn about trying to nickel-and-dime our way with fees, and I appreciate staff digging deep to try to find a lot of this. And I do recognize that cost recovery is, I think, a policy that this council has had for several years now to try to get us to full cost recovery. Credit card fees, to Mr. Clitherow's point is, yes, most vendors get charged 3% for using up to $4.5 with American Express, and they pay, that comes out of, it either gets increased in the price or it comes out of their bottom line. For us, it comes out of our bottom line by subsidizing those points. I guess the biggest one is still.
Parking.
Parking meters, which we can't, our current system doesn't allow us to recover that credit card processing fee.
Unless it's sent through an app, correct?
Okay. And so, unless it's done through the app. And I'm assuming that it's beneficial for us to use credit cards than to pay someone to go and collect change out of the meters, and it's inefficient, because I haven't, I don't think touched a coin in a really long time. So I think that hopefully something in the future when we reevaluate our parking meters that we can negotiate, use our own credit card processors so that we can, you know, recover that fee from credit cards.
Definitely when they're, when we replace the meters, it's definitely something we consider.
Absolutely. So with regard to the ticket fee, you know, I had brought this idea forward a long time ago. Hopefully, you know, as the state beaches actually did more concerts, because we would get nothing from them, and we'd end up with all the overflow from those. But it sounds like since we are now capable and able to do larger events on our beaches, they've kind of given that to us. So looking at that in the future could be something, but it doesn't seem like it would generate enough revenue. But I did have a question about, with regard to the ticket fee, have we decided if that would include the airshow?
So this does not, as I mentioned, this is a conservative number. So the number would potentially be higher.
Okay. But it's envisioned that the airshow would, this would be included in airshow tickets?
So I would defer to Ashley.
Yes.
Okay. And then the $2 to $10 for the sports complex, yeah, I guess this is more for Ashley. So we already see people, this is brought up a couple of times by a lot of people increasing this. So we already see people parking the library parking lot during events for $2. I'm assuming we anticipate seeing somewhat of an increase when we go to, if we were to go to $10 there. And this is mainly for folks coming from out of town for special events. Going to 10, can you talk a little bit about where that number came from and kind of the idea behind it?
Sure. So in reviewing other sports complexes in Southern California, a lot of them are charging parking fees and/or entry fees into the facilities. And so we felt that this was a happy medium, where midweek, when we know most of our residents are using the sports complex, maintain the $2 fee. And then when we have out-of-town residents coming in for tournaments and special events, and that's when the parking rate would escalate. There's also, I am directionally challenged, but on the library side of the parking lot, there is a drive-through gate that is always open. So we'll look into possible measures of closing that gate. That way, it makes it less convenient for people who are interested in parking in the library lot to then walk up into the sports complex adjacent to that sidewalk.
Okay. And so for our bigger events, do they take up all the parking in the sports complex lot, or is there still available parking?
It depends on the size of the event. So, and not every tournament or special event takes up every field, so there could be a mixed use of various events going on at the same weekend.
Okay.
So we work with our sports complex operators to make sure that there's a balance of use at the sports complex and that we're not programming something so large that there isn't a parking mitigation plan.
Okay. All right, that makes sense. And then they, I haven't parked at the sports complex in a bit. They have, is it, you go to Ticket Machine, pay, and put it on your windshield?
Right now, that's the process, yes.
Okay. And so we would have some, is that system capable of going to $10 on weekends?
Yes, and we're actually working to improve the technology at the sports complex as well.
Okay. To go to, like, an app, too, so you don't have to go find the machine?
Yes.
Excellent. And then the use of the council chambers in B8, B7. Your slide, you'd only mentioned B7 and B8. Are, is staff still recommending that we also include council chambers in that math?
Yes.
Okay. And I brought this up during our meeting, that I did have concerns about using the dais as part of that. Is that something that staff could just eliminate from it, that we put something over this so that it, somebody couldn't, a private group couldn't come in and pretend like they're doing something and using, you know, all of our, I think, taking down and putting up all our stuff would be aggressive, and I could just see that being?
So we could look at a policy for that. Currently, people that use the council chambers, like the Coastal Commission, the Regional Water Quality Control Board, Department DTSC.
I would assume that for government events, or government meetings, I should say, not just, you know, a government official wanting to do an event here, but like, actual government business, I think, would be fine to use the dais, right? Like, that's what's here for?
Yeah. And these fees would cover all the costs it takes us to run this. They can't run it by themselves.
Great.
So the Coastal Commission, when they come in, you've been in here when they've done that, they, they need our staff and our help. So it's a good thing to do, but we can work on a policy if there was a concern about private people using this, and we can make sure that our logo and things like that are not in the room.
I think that would be, I would like to see a policy like that. But I guess for, and are we allowed to charge the state for things? Because I know that sometimes they just say, "We're not going to pay you."
I think they've paid us in the past.
They have? Okay.
Because they come in here 24 hours.
They should show up with cash.
You know, they come out, they come here to set up, and they're here late and early, and so, and on days that maybe we aren't here.
Well, it just, yeah, I just didn't know if there was, like, an exemption for, like, federal employees, that they don't pay TOT when they're here at our hotels on official business. So I didn't know if the state or those kind of other government agencies are exempt from our system. I'm glad to know that they pay.
I haven't heard that.
I'm glad to know that they pay. Okay. So we talked about that. So, yeah, so I had, and thank you CFO Hahn, for producing a document that basically showed year-over-year budget increases, or just budget increases or decreases, showing the COVID slump where we had pretty drastic cuts across the board. And so it's good, it's helpful to see. I did note that, as I was reviewing, that the document presented, and hopefully this can be added as a late communication to the package so that it's there for folks to be able to review, I just noticed that it's the adopted budget for 23-24 and not the revised budget for 23-24. It's like a $16 million difference for general fund, so it's not the end of the world. But I was, is there, I don't understand the accounting, government accounting side for those. Is there a reason for using the adopted budget instead of revised budget there?
So because the revised budget includes carryovers, we felt that the adopted budget, using the adopted budget would be more consistent.
Okay. Again, the carryovers thing gets, I think, everything.
It can be a little wonky. So we felt it would be more consistent using adopted.
Okay. And so, you know, I'm just reviewing, you know, some of the increases that actually, folks, again, we were, we've seen the slide where we're looking, basically, without EMS fees or increasing these master fan fees, we have a nearly million-dollar deficit this year. So again, we're trying to nickel-and-dime our way there, and it appears next year, we're also going to have to dip into our Section 115 account. And, you know, in previous years, that was, that was in some out years. So looking at, at the additional departments, so obviously, a lot of the fire and police increases are due to the MOU and changes in the new contracts that were approved last year, because we, obviously, were supporting public safety at that time, and still do. But the city clerk's increase is due to the election coming up in this year? So we've allocated additional funds to be able to pay for the election.
Correct.
At the end of the year. And does that include the March election that we weren't scheduled for as well? Or is that, was that in last year's budget as a revised?
That was last year.
Okay. So that would have been, that was added in, that'll get cleaned up at some point when we get the actual budget for 23-24?
Yes.
Okay. And then we look at, so we have clerk, fire, police, and obviously, the fire is MOU-related. The non-departmental increases. So when we have workers' comp and claims like that, do those tend to go to HR? It's hard to, like, try to track where our litigation claims, our trip and fall claims, our workers' comp and all of those.
They're in HR.
They're in HR? Okay. So then the non-departmental increase of roughly $7 million, or 7%, what really accounts for a lot of that?
Are you looking at, I'm sorry, are you looking at general fund?
Yeah, general fund, I'm sorry. Okay.
So it's the one-time, so it's the one-time revenue?
Okay. So that's where that shows up in there? Okay, great, great. And that will be, we estimate we'll be getting roughly $5 to $8 million a year for the next several years until we get to the total?
No, so it's 6.9 this, so it's 6.9 this year in the general fund. It is based on a formula that's set by the Health and Safety Code.
Okay.
As well as by available property tax revenues.
So what do we anticipate for the next several fiscal years from that?
I would anticipate, so I would conservatively say about three.
Okay. So we got a kind of a larger chunk upfront, and then the next tranches will be around three a year until we get, we zero out the amount we're owed?
Yes, but that said, we would still accrue 3% interest on the remaining principal balance.
Okay. It's like we're loan shark in that. Okay. So continually compounding the interest on the available balance. Okay. Yeah, and then obviously, I mean, folks brought it up, the city attorney's budget's increasing. You know, I think at the last budget I talked about, that the city attorney had stated that the, you know, our cases are somewhat cyclical, and I had advocated for outsourcing some of those positions instead of making them full positions. To my knowledge, is that we haven't filled all four of them, but I think that the increase in pay for some of them, I think, brings some of them up to market rate. I did go back and review some of the older, like, what happened in 2021 and '22, and it does appear that, you know, the city attorney's office were brought up to market rate in '22, in November, yeah, November of '22, one of the last actions taken by the last council. The one note was that the actual city attorney's salary was, as a competitor, during the review for class and comp, was just under, was still considered market rate and not 5% behind. So obviously, the city attorney's raise from almost two years ago, I think, accounts for a lot of that 30% increase. I would obviously look at potentially defunding one of those positions in order to help pay for some of the salary increases, and that may help us offset some of the fees, but I'm guessing I don't have votes for that. The other issue is that, you know, when we gave, when we discussed recruitment and retention for police officers, that was part of the math, the calculus, in order to give raises to the police officers, we still have quite a few open positions, and I'm glad to hear this evening that we've got some offers out, and we're going to decrease that number. But at the end of that, we're still going to have double-digit openings for that. And so, you know, again, like, if increasing salaries still doesn't necessarily bring folks here, so I, you know, I wonder if there's other things that are mitigating in that, and obviously, we want to address those to make sure that we have staff, because I agree with the city attorney that if, there's still cases that need to be handled, even if, even if we don't, even if there's not a person there, they still have to be handled. So, yeah, so again, I do have some concerns that we are increasing, you know, our litigation exposure. Some of the litigation that we're taking on isn't necessary, in my mind. It's unforced in certain circumstances and can be ameliorated or mooted by taking action of this council. So, you know, with that, I do support the two positions, I don't, or the increase for the deputy, changing the, what is it, changing the role of?
Deputy.
The deputy to senior position, the prosecutor, community prosecutor to senior, so we've got a little bit more span of control, and then the chief assistant city attorney to hopefully be able to recruit that position. I think some of the below-the-line represented groups, I think, I'd like to have more of a conversation on as to what that looks like and to reorganize that. But, I mean, obviously, I think, again, I think defunding one of those positions, because it hasn't been filled in a year, and potentially outsourcing that, to be able to at least get, have the bodies to get something done instead of having to recruit, I think, would be, you know, save us at least a little bit of money, because we have seen a nearly $1.3 million increase in the budget over two fiscal years. So it's a lot of money. So, yeah, those are my comments. We need to, I'm, as I think, I think as Councilmember Bolton said, like, I am very concerned that we're not having serious conversations right now about what to do in the out years. about what to do in the out years. A million here, a million there for budget deficit is, is massageable, but we've already taken the drastic, we are bare bones across our departments. We are, we have a managed hiring already put in for a magical $2 million savings. I think if we funded all our positions, we ever magically wanted to come work here, we don't have the money to pay everybody. There's, how many open positions are we gonna, are we holding right now?
Let me see. 107.
107 open positions. That's tough, right? Like, that's tough to run this organization on that. And we have a lot of folks that are doing multiple jobs in multiple departments. And to get to $8 million next year, 11 and 15, assuming that the proposed fees increase, increase on folks, we're going to have to have serious conversations about how to resolve these issues. And that's, I think, the biggest issue. And I'm disappointed that we aren't talking about that now, and that we're going to talk about that maybe in six months, hopefully in six months at mid-year budget. But I think we need to really, really address those issues, because these are systemic, structural deficits. These aren't one-time, well, hey, we had a, the library broke, the electricity broke, and we had to fix that at a one-time dollars. These are recurring expenses. And if we have to start plugging holes with one-time dollars, that's going to hurt our bond rating right when we're going to need to borrow money to do massive infrastructure improvements in this city. And for those of you that were on the infrastructure report card, got to tour a lot of the infrastructure. For those of you that tour our building here and see when it rains that we have hoses coming out of the ceiling. We have a long history of building things and building parks and building structures with no maintenance attached to them, no way to upkeep. And now we have, you know, we're honoring 50 years of this building. And there's a reason that there's external speakers places instead of actually renovating the entire speaker system. It's tough. We have an old city where, you know, we're not Irvine, who've, you know, are on their first set of asphalt for most of their streets. And so we need to have those serious conversations to find out how we're going to be able to resolve these deficits. Because I don't think we can cut any more employees without a cut in service that folks believe that this city deserves, and I believe this city deserves, is a high level of service. And I think that things have gotten more expensive, obviously. Everything is more, we've had to rebid multiple public works contracts because of the increase in inflation, the increase in labor, the increase in goods. So as I said, I'm disappointed to see that we're not having a holistic conversation now when we have opportunity in landing, landing room to get there, instead of in six months, when it's like, how do we come up with $7.5 million? And I do appreciate that Councilmember Bolton did bring up two of the things that we've kind of introduced in the last couple of years that turned out to be quite large revenue generators, one of which we know and one we can estimate, which is short-term vacation rentals and, and then potentially cannabis in the future. So, yeah, those are my comments. You know, I think I'll be, I'll be supporting, I think, the budget at this point. I'm interested to see what my colleagues have to say. But again, I do have really big concerns about the ability for us to be able to deliver services at the level that the city wants with this budget outlook. Thank you.
Councilmember Strickland.
So we have 107 positions that are not filled. Is this budget reflect as if they were filled?
So the budget includes a $4 million vacancy as well as a million and a half managed hiring.
So if the 107 are not filled, we would have a massive surplus because we're not filling those?
So we also, while we don't have 107 positions filled, we do also utilize some of those savings by hiring contractors to help provide essential services.
But those 107 positions that are not filled are, in this budget, are acting as if they were?
Some of them. Some.
Percentage?
I don't have an exact percentage right now. So the number is about five and a half, so the number is five and a half million.
So five and a half million is budget and?
As a vacancy factor.
As a vacancy factor. And how many positions would that roughly be of the 107?
It's about like 35 to 40.
Number two, very concerning with one of the comments by one of our constituents that said, "We're comparing, when we do these fee structures, we're only comparing to Newport Beach." Is that correct?
No, that's not correct.
Are we comparing to other, because I agree with the person who came forward. We're not Newport Beach, we're Huntington Beach. Did you look wide in terms of how many jurisdictions? Were we looking to measure our fee structure compared to them, a wide variety?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Okay, because I do know, just from anecdotally, the $2 at the sports complex. I know for a fact, because I take my son on tournaments. He plays basketball, and we do tournaments all around the state of California, and some outside the state of California. And the minimum that we pay, and I'm talking Anaheim, Santa Barbara, Thousand Oaks, Garden Grove, San Diego, the minimum we pay is 10, but it's more like $15, $20 per parking when I take my son on those tournaments. And so we're talking about $2 currently and moving it to $10, correct, for the sports complex for people who come in softball tournaments from out of town?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
So I think one thing just to note as well, for example, because I know the police records was also highlighted. I mean, that slide is up on the screen right now. So this also includes a sampling of other Orange County cities that were surveyed for the police records charges. So it includes other cities such as Costa Mesa, Fountain Valley, Garden Grove, Orange, Santa Ana, and Tustin.
Okay. Other, other voices that I've heard that said, "Our city attorney just keeps losing cases, keeps losing cases." I think there's a little bit of amnesia. The $38 million that our city attorney won for the city of Huntington Beach, where did that money go? Did it stay within his department?
No, it did not.
Where did it go?
So some of it went, so we received the Emerald Cove funds, which was a little over.
Can we do a breakdown of kind of where that 38 million, all 38 million's going?
So we only, so we received $6 million last year, and that was for the Emerald Cove funds. And then this year, we received, or for the '24, '25 fiscal year, we received DOF approval for a little over $8 million. And then for both, for that amount, 20% would go to low and moderate income housing, and that's set by Health and Safety Code, so California State Statute. And then 25% is required to go to the Section 115 trust, and that was set by council's reserve policy, just to be proactive in regards to getting ahead of our unfunded pension liabilities. And then additionally, so.
So that 38 million, how much went to the general fund?
So right now, we had, I want to say, so we've gotten, so right now, we've gotten about, I want to say, about $15 million?
Into the general fund?
So right now, we've gotten.
No, I'm asking, the question is, how much of that 38 million has gone to our general fund?
So right now, we've gotten $15 million, so, about $15 million so far from the state.
And that $50 million went to the general fund?
All but, all but 20% of it.
Okay, all right.
And then of that, it's most, some of it went to the Section 115 trust, some of it went to the infrastructure fund for projects, some of it went to the equipment replacement fund to.
So the big settlement that the attorney did for the city has kind of gone all throughout the city for services?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So the other thing I would like to point out, I would like to ask the city attorney, because he's been hit pretty hard tonight, is my understanding, coming in as a new council member, is you were kind of singled out, right? You were the only person who didn't get the COLA from the last council, is that correct?
So of all 1,000 employees, I was the only one since 2019 who hasn't, who hadn't gotten a raise or any cost of living increase. So zero adjustments since 2019, with inflation going up about 20% since then. But as importantly too, I think it's important for the public to know that when there are budget increases that, when increases are reflected in the budget over the years, a lot of that I have no control over, because there are two classes, two, two groups in my office who are members of associations. There's MEO and Teamsters. So when council goes back and updates those contracts, that's beyond my control. And those increases are reflected in my budget year-over-year, every time a contract is increased. One of the reasons that the pay increase is presented tonight in the budget is because after doing a comp study, it was learned that our attorneys are currently 10% below market. So all of these increases and all of these adjustments are really just to get back to baseline with the market. And after, you know, like I said, negotiations with MEO and MEA or Teamsters. So none of this is just additional money being thrown at any particular attorney or position in the office. It's bringing, it's basically bringing their pay scales back to baseline.
And one other thing, before I let you go, City Attorney, many of the members up here said, "We're stuck with this firm," meaning your leadership in our city attorney's office that were stuck. Do you not have to go before the voters and get a majority vote, just like the rest of us?
Well, obviously, every four years, I go before the voters. But, but more importantly, we do as good a job in our office as possible to be as nimble as possible to save the taxpayers' money in that if we have to use outside counsel for specialized areas of legal expertise, we do it on a consultation basis, meaning we don't simply hand off the entire case for them for handling at $400 or $500 an hour for the next year or two or whatever and rack up a million dollars per case. We actually just tap them for a few hours here and there, and we try to do as much of that work in-house as possible. The only reason that we continue to use outside legal firms for some cases is because in some cases, like the Gina Clayton Tarvin case for the, for the CPRA matter, I was named as a defendant and can't defend the case, right? So we have to, I have to recuse myself, and we send it to an outside law firm. So occasionally, where conflicts arise, we have, we do have to send the entire case out for handling by outside counsel.
And, and so I would just like to conclude also, I'm glad we did have serious conversations last year when we came in, because the out-year deficit, we, we were projected over a $7 million deficit for this year's budget, but we addressed it last year, giving us a surplus this year. So I'm glad that we went forward last year and reduced our spending when, quite frankly, some on this dais were, do, did not support that initiative, and we would have had a $7 million deficit this year. So I'm glad that we had some of those serious conversations last year, so we ended up with a surplus this year. So I want to thank the staff, and I'm sure we'll have a lively debate as we move forward. But I really appreciate all the hard work that you went in and, and looking at other jurisdictions and making sure that we're not overfeigning our citizens, because I agree with our, our voices that came forward. We need to make sure that we don't drive people away from Huntington Beach based on our fees. So thank you.
Does anybody else have questions?
I have one quick question, just following on Councilmember Strickland's questions for the city attorney. So there's something that I don't understand and I want to clarify. So if I'm misquoting you, just correct me if I'm wrong. So you said from 2019 until 2022, you didn't get a cost of living increase?
No, from 2019 up until last year, if you're referring to the last year's increase. But aside from council action in 2000, I think it was end of 2022, setting that aside, no increases whatsoever, none.
So how does that work? Because does that happen automatically? Does it happen automatically for the clerk's office or for the treasurer's office?
No.
I just don't know the answer.
Yeah, it's a good question. So for the electeds, under state law, electeds are not allowed, allowed to have, or it's not, it's impermissible, it's illegal essentially, to basically set an elected's compensation in closed session. So fortunately or unfortunately, all the compensation for all electeds has to be done in open session. And so what occurs and has occurred in the past is each elected member, our clerk, our treasurer, and myself have come to council and requested increases. And oftentimes, we will consult and have consulted in the past with the city manager's office or with a few council members to say, "Hey, it's probably about time." And there, the city manager may say, "Hey, you know, you, there's, you know, they're going to tell us candidly, you're not going to get the support, so don't even bother." And the last thing really an elected official wants to do is come to the council when, you know, the public's watching and say, "Hey, you know, I think I need a pay increase." And the council says, "No." I mean, it's kind of like, you know, it's just a tough ask to make publicly. So normally, if the sense is that there's not going to be any support for it, then the request isn't brought forward. So, and there's no, you know, there's no, there's no automatic, there's no system to automatically create increases, if that answers your question. I hope I answered your question.
Yeah. Okay, so you didn't, you didn't make a request between 2019 and the end of 2022?
Well, I attempted to, and it never got to the floor.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Moser.
Thank you. Okay. So thank you for all of your hard work, and this is a lot. But it's, as has been said in the past, one of the most important meetings of the year. So I'm going to go through my notes. One of them is actually more of a recommendation for future, for community and library services, which we've talked about a little bit already, which is, you know, being in the Central Park collaborative meetings, we have a lot of discussion, obviously, with our volunteers who do so much amazing work in our community. And when times are tough, I think that that work is even more valuable as we move forward. It looks like things are going to continue to be difficult. And one of the things that we talked about in that meeting was perhaps, and I don't have this title properly named, but perhaps having some type of a volunteer coordinator that is actually focused on a number of things that the volunteers in the parks do, whether it be, I know Shirley's working on the Adopt a Park program, creating the systems for that, but actually somebody to work with those individuals and individual groups. Also, we have a number of things like the scouts that come in and want to do projects, but they have to, we discussed in some of the meetings, they go kind of round and round sometimes. And so there are some inefficiencies and some wastes that can probably be eliminated. I think it would pay for itself right away if we had something like that. So that's just something for future I think would be worth looking at. Let's see, the next thing. For human resources, one of the things, and I don't think we, we kind of talked about this a little bit, but the adopted budget for 2324 went up by 44.84%. The proposed budget for 2425 goes up by 17.83%. Sunny, can you talk a little bit about why that is the case? And I'll just preface it with, I believe that it's workers' comp and general liability, but I was really looking at the workers' comp piece.
It is workers' comp and general liability, and it did have a lot to do with just increases in just workers' comp costs and insurance premiums, as well as just some extraordinary large cases that we had had recently. With that, we have noticed that our expectation, hopefully, is that the insurance premium spikes have largely leveled off. And so we should hopefully see, we should hopefully just see normal increases or more normal increases in our worker comp premiums moving forward, except for a large one-time increase in the following year, just due to one extraordinary case that we had in the last year that will show up in next year's premium. But except for that, we should see a leveling off in spikes.
So that 17%, which is higher than like before the 44%, is probably because of that one-time additional?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, so we should see that one more time, and then after that, then we should hopefully just see a leveling off. As far as, we have been engaging in some proactive programs. So with, within public safety, the police department has engaged, has gone out to RFP for a employee wellness program. Fire has also engaged in kind of more proactive wellness programs as well. So just even within their, their gym equipment, as they go to replace their equipment in their gym rather than kind of using more of the kind of standardized, like heavier weights and standard, more, I guess, equipment like that. They're using more like prehab-type equipment, which is lower impact and actually more, more, less injury-prone. So with that, it would actually hopefully help to reduce workers' comp injury.
Great, thank you. That was my next question, which was going to be, what are we, what can we control and what are we doing to mitigate those rising costs? Well, thank you for answering that. Let's see. Let's see. Okay. Chief Haverly, this one's for you. So, I know we had some residents question, you know, we're looking at, you know, making a large expenditure for a fire truck during a tough financial time. And I had spoken to Chief Haverly earlier, and I just wanted to get a little bit more sunshine on kind of why we're doing that now and how it makes sense.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember. So, this particular fire engine is replacing a 2005 engine, so it's approaching 20 years. What's happened over the last few years is fire engine purchases take anywhere from two to four years for replacement. So, our previous fire engine manufacturer was at four years for replacement. So, when you put, that's not even the time that you go through counsel, that's the time that you put the order in. So, we moved to a new manufacturer that we've been able to drop it down to about two years to two and a half years. And so, right now, with this engine in the replacement, it's at, it's at the equivalent of about 300,000 miles, 20 years old. If we waited for the next fiscal year, it would push it into the 25-year mark for the engine in service, which increases its maintenance and decreases its reliability. And so, we have an opportunity to do it through this budget and put it into an existing purchase that we're doing, which will allow us to get the engine back a little sooner.
Great. And Sunny, as far as the funds used for that purchase, where do those come from?
So, we do have specific funds that are set aside annually for equipment replacement, and then within there, we do have funds set aside for vehicle replacement. So, we work closely with our fleet supervisor to determine which vehicle should be prioritized for replacement. So, that's something that's done on an annual basis. So, this year, when reviewing that list, one of the items that was also slated for replacement and prioritized was the engine.
Thank you very much. And obviously, we want to make sure that our trucks don't break down on the way to helping people, so it's important. Thank you. Next one. One of the things that Mr. Inouye asked about was the page 27, I just want to better understand it. The revenue and expenditures, the all funds comparison was at $10.9 million difference. Can you just explain that for the general public, so we can understand why that's showing that way?
Sure. So, on that page as well, there's also a footnote at the bottom. So, one thing that we do also do is, we do also utilize fund balance for certain projects to, so we basically essentially save up over a number of years for large capital projects. So, for example, within our Quimby Fund, we had saved up several years' worth of revenues in order to have large projects. So, this year, for example, we have the Edison Park reconfiguration for $2 million, which utilizes fund balance. So, that's just one example. So, with that, if you just look at that fund by itself, it would look like there is a deficit fund balance, so kind of similar to, say, replacing a roof on your own home. If you look at kind of your own, like, income statement, say, in isolation for that, just that one year, it would look like you're running a deficit, but, I mean, you've kind of planned and saved for that, so, you know, you're, it's a planned expense essentially. So, there is a footnote at the bottom where we did try to explain it, but, you know, definitely, I think, when we go to publish the adopted budget, we'll definitely make sure to highlight that more. So, I know it is kind of small, so we'll make sure to include that more.
I think talking about it like the roof that you planned for is actually very helpful as well. Okay. Thank you. So, then I appreciated the additional master fee and charges, schedule adjustments. You know, we're looking at a little bit under $1 million in general fund revenue. It's great that we are doing that, looking for cost recovery, but obviously, it's insufficient to mitigate the out-year increasing deficits. And, you know, I think that one of the things that was mentioned earlier is that, you know, we're on a strong financial path, and I think that that's insincere, because while I really appreciate all of the efforts that are going in to make sure that we do everything we can in this moment, I think we're not looking at a longer run. You're probably looking at a longer run, but we're not in this presentation looking at a longer run as far as what we're going to do to mitigate these year-over-year deficits as we look, move forward. And we can only scrape so many things from fees to be able to mitigate those longer-term deficits. And so, I do think it's really important that we, you know, do get really regular and urgent updates throughout the year about what we're doing, what, you know, attraction we have, what possibilities there are. I know I was looking at, which you provided, some past presentations in years past of, you know, different mechanisms, tools, different revenue opportunities. It was also mentioned earlier with short-term rentals, cannabis, those things were actually on the same presentation from, I think, 2018. So, you know, those are, those are the types of things that I definitely want to better understand how they might be able to impact revenues. You know, another thing of note, you know, we just tonight increased our T-bid assessment. And in that discussion, we talked about, you know, when tourism is going well, the city of Huntington Beach is doing well. And I think that it's important for all of us to consider that our public image can have an impact on our revenue as well. And so, the more functional that our city government is working, the more likely that tourism will improve, the more welcoming city we are, the more likely tourism will improve. And our revenues will increase. And so, I just think that's something that's important for us to keep in mind. And also, as was mentioned by Councilmember Kelmick, we have substantial infrastructure needs, and I know that they're going to be coming forward at the end of summer. But, you know, again, if we go into these deficits, our bond ratings will go down just at the time when we need to be able to have bonds, to be able to pay for these. So, that's something that, you know, it's just very important. I don't want to have massive cuts in services. Our residents deserve high-quality services, and they're used to the services that they have. But the way that this is looking on the out-years is that there is going to either be pain or we need to be innovative or thoughtful about what we're going to do to mitigate, you know, problems that we're having here, and also look at possible revenue options. The final thing that I'll say is, let's see, with regards to the City Attorney's Office, I just, I would appreciate more regular reporting, and we've talked about this before as well, more regular reporting and transparency, certainly for the council, just so we can even see what's on the docket, how things are going. And so, we have kind of a document over time, because a lot goes on and we don't have that. But I also think that that's helpful for the community as well, but I know it would be helpful for me. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? Go ahead.
So, I just wanted to make sure that we have correct information out to folks. So, I think Mayor Strickland, you did mention that we were looking, former Mayor Strickland and Councilmember Strickland, we were looking at deficits in the out-years. So, I pulled the financial outlook from February 15th slide, Slide 11, for those of you at home, on page six of the mid-year budget update, showing a surpluses through '25-'26. So, that's $4 million surplus in '21-'22, $1.6 million surplus '22-'23, $2.5 million surplus '23-'24, $2.5 million surplus '24-'25, and $2.5 million surplus '25-'26. I could get to the '22-'23 budget, which shows similar outcomes. But I just wanted to make it clear that this, these deficits in out-years is a relatively new, a new thing in the city.
I would point out that when we got projections in last year's budget, as we dealt with it, we had a $7 million deficit in budget year plus one, and that's when we addressed reducing spending by $7 million last year that allowed us to have a surplus this year.
Okay. Let's go ahead. No vote, please.
Mayor.
Please don't interrupt the meeting.
Mayor.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Councilmember McKean, you mentioned adjusting a resolution for senior fees, and I'm just not clear which resolution that relates to.
Do you know, Sunny, that would just be my motion with that slight amendment, to carve out the senior residents from the CPI.
So, it would be Resolution 2024-31.
And did I miss anything else? I think that was the only amendment made.
That was it.
That was it.
Can you talk a little bit more about that? I'm sorry, I kind of missed.
Yeah, just on the master fee schedule, it's going to be pegged to CPI increases to not exceed 5% per year, and I want to carve out senior residents from the CPI increase, automatic CPI increase, and they'll be handled on an as-needed basis.
So, the master fee schedule is item H, because they're listed with letters? Is that right?
It's, yes.
Yes. Okay. Yeah, item H.
If you don't mind, I just, I want a little bit more clarity. So, you're just speaking to any item that involves, like, has a senior designation to it that wouldn't be adjusted?
Correct.
Okay. So, like, if a senior goes to rent a room and there's a rate, no senior rate for it, that gets adjusted, they don't get a discount?
Correct.
But for like the senior parking pass, for instance?
Yeah, like the senior parking pass would not be adjusted to CPI. So, any, any senior-related fee?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, who is the mover in the second?
I moved it.
Okay. And Strickland. All right. Are you ready to vote?
Yes.
All right. Councilmember Moser.
Aye.
Bolton?
Can I vote no on item H and item A? And yes on the rest?
Registered as a vote, no on H. All right. Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKean?
Yes.
Kelmick?
Aye.
All right. So, the motion passes 7-0 with the exception of item H, 6-1, Bolton, no.
Okay. Moving on to Councilmember Items, Councilmember Kelmick, please introduce your item.
Let me find my page here. Okay. So, first of all, I'd like to apologize for having to even put this item on the agenda. I'm angry that it's needed, needed to do this. I mean, we spoke earlier, we have serious problems we need to address. We all took an oath to defend the Constitution, which is when we were sworn in. My item is absolutely absurd, just as the next item is absurd and a waste of time.
Would you yield the floor for a moment?
Yeah.
So, this, this question applies to both items, which is, what does this have to do with the budget or homelessness or any of the other things that we need to be focused on?
That's an excellent question. It doesn't. That was, the point of this item was to create a fine point for the fact that the business of the city is done at the last item. This next item is performative. This item is performative, and it's absolutely, completely ridiculous. You know, I'm going to continue working to try to find solutions to these budget deficits that actually affect the day-to-day of residents instead of national issues or silly issues like this. You know, call me when you guys are ready to be serious in government. I'm going home, I withdraw this item.
Please do.
All right.
Here, let me, let me in.
Councilmember Strickland.
Well, I'd like to address this item and just say, you know, we have been doing the budget, we have been doing the business, hold on, we have been doing the business of the people. In fact, we, we put together, we were, I believe, 30 officers, 28 officers down, and we did a remarkable job at putting forward a proposal to give the tools that our law enforcement needs to keep Huntington Beach safe. We also did a fire contract that we did the same to make sure in Huntington Beach, public safety is the number-one priority. We just got recognition, and Oceanside and other cities in San Diego are coming to Huntington Beach to look at what we've done in homelessness, and we're one of the few cities where homelessness has actually gone down, not up. And by the way, not spending the billions and trillions of dollars that Governor Newsom's done on trying to solve the problem for the last 10 years, and even though he's spending enormous amounts of money, hasn't seen the results that we've seen here in Huntington Beach. We just did a budget, and I, as I pointed out, last year, we faced a $7 million out-year budget that we would have faced this year if we didn't act at the time. And there were spokes on this dais who did not vote to support a budget, that if, if that budget did not pass, we would have a massive deficit today. So, I'm glad we were serious last year in passing a budget, and then we just now passed a budget that's good for the people of Huntington Beach. And now, we also just got done with Visit HB and the T-bid that will help grow our economy here in Huntington Beach. So, for those who think that we're not serious, look, again, homelessness is down, where the most of everybody else is up, with spending less money. We did a police contract and a fire contract that made sure that we always make sure that public safety is the number-one priority in Huntington Beach, so people can feel safe as they visit here. And I would like to end with, yes, we saved the airshow. The airshow provides over $100 million to our local economy, over $70 million directly to our economy. And if it was for those three people who walked out, we wouldn't have an airshow, and we wouldn't have that kind of economic vitality here in Huntington Beach. So, let, let them leave, because quite frankly, we would actually get more done with four members than, than, than the seven that's currently on this body.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Okay, moving on to the last item, Councilmember, sorry, Mayor Protan Pat, present your item.
Oh, I think it's perfect. Their little theatrics and stuff is just exactly, their little drama, suddenly they're concerned about the budget when they let in Amazon not paying taxes, and then they spent the money on Elon and all that other stuff. And now, it's obviously a campaign year, and they can, I can guarantee you, they're self-service and not community service. It's just typical, they run out before the job is done. But on to my statement, my issue. This affirmation of the city of Huntington Beach is to show our commitment and respect for the Constitution of the United States of America. The Constitution and its amendments are the foundation of our republic, securing each person the rights to live and work freely without government overreach and unreasonable restriction from any entity. These freedoms have rarely been challenged in our country as they have been recently and called into question. From a presidential candidate defending himself from unreasonable charges in court to a city council candidate being attacked by an incumbent who wormed his way onto the council, but he's attacking him through lawfare and for speaking out against him. Then there's the constant attack by our, on our Second Amendment, by our state, that ignores our federal laws and claims to be a sanctuary state. This weakens local control. It also just attacks, just weakens our whole society, letting people in, free phones, free food, free medical, free housing, and that's all at taxpayers' expense. Laws are being made to weaken the laws that protect those that, of law-abiding citizens and businesses, such as the Second Amendment laws that's constantly under attack by Newsom's friends, and/or the COVID-19 restrictions, which was probably another trial run to try to control us. But while other laws are being ignored by prosecutors or weakened on behalf of enabling criminals to be even more brazen or violent, we've all seen it, we've seen it on the TV, we've seen how these prosecutors aren't even supposed to choose and pick which laws they enforce or prosecute, they're just supposed to prosecute the ones that get brought before them. With open borders enabled, our federal government or illegal immigration encouraged by our governor at the taxpayers' expense, the laws are not being enforced by our government equally or rationally. All the while, those that speak out often get attacked for or suppressed from speaking out freely. This is barely scratching the surface of the infringements being committed against the citizens of our state and country. This is a warning of a gross deterioration of our republic and of our beloved freedoms. The Constitution and amendments are the foundation of our republic, securing each person the right to live and work freely without government overreach or unreasonable restriction from any entity. We should all cherish our freedom to speak our views, especially to our government, and we should be empowered to defend ourselves. and we should be empowered to defend ourselves from attacks on our granted freedom. The recommended action is for the city of Huntington Beach, City Council affirms and communicates our commitment and respect for the Constitution of the United States of America with special recognition that Huntington Beach is a First and Second Amendment-friendly city. I just got to add, some of this came at the request of a concerned residence. We had a meeting with her, and she expressed some of her concerns. It shouldn't matter if you're a conservative or liberal, Republican or Democrat, right, left. This should be a bipartisan issue, which was turned into some theatrical act of stupidity. This should be a bipartisan issue of everyone being treated equally, not abusing position of power, lawfare, lies and misinformation, or politics to get your way. It shouldn't be by any means necessary to get your way. I welcome debate, cross-checks, and honest discussion. It is also important that we show support for our Constitution of the Republic of the United States. With all the radical ideas floating around, we must get back to our country's basics, the Constitution, upon what this country was founded upon. There's confusion and other symptoms of societal decay and a general lack of understanding of foundational principles. We see that there are times for basic statements of fact and/or confirmation. This agenda item is an example, also so that there can be no misunderstanding of these two constitutional amendments and where our fair city stands in support of them. I ask you to support this item. It's, it's just disgusting what's going on in our whole country. We see the several tiers of justice that's supposed to be blind, and it's not. It's favoring the deterioration of our country. And there's too many idiots that are at the top that are screwing this up for many of us. And by reaffirming this, it just says that Huntington Beach is going to stand back and be strong with our very important foundation of the Constitution. That's all.
Councilmember Strickland.
I'd like to quote Martin Luther King Jr., "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." And so I will say, a lot of injustice has gone on in this country, and people don't like it. And I will say, I want to thank Councilman Burns, Mayor Protan Burns, for bringing this forward, because I think it's important that we protect our Constitution and that we let everybody know that this is a Constitution-friendly city. Thank you.
I'll just add that, you know, we're a nation that's built on laws, and those laws have been shredded these last few years. And that directly results in a decaying society. So I have zero issue, obviously, with affirming my commitment and respect for the rule of law and the Constitution of the United States.
I do have no problem reaffirming my commitment. And I'm, it's blowing my mind that three people who were sworn in onto this council, and they raise their hand and swore to protect and defend our Constitution, walked out on this item. That's very telling.
Before our meeting was finished. They walked, they swore they'd serve the people, and they abandoned it before the meeting was adjourned. They have no respect. But again, it's a campaign.
I'll second your motion.
Yeah. Pieces of shit.
Ready to vote?
Got it?
All right. Councilmember Moser's absent, Bolton's absent, Mayor Protan Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKean?
Aye.
Kelmick's absent, so it passes 4-3 with the three absent.
Thank you for the second.
We'll make it noted that they left and they were here, that they weren't absent for the whole meeting. And I want to make it noted that they were, they walked out before this vote specifically. I want that to be in the record.
Copy.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.